Okay.
Oh, you got it.
Ms. Morgan.
Good afternoon.
It is Monday, May 10th. The time now is 1:00 P. M. Today's order of business is a workshop. We will be speaking on the subjects today will be, one, under project scoping and engagement process, two, prioritizing workshop topics, and the agenda review of May 11th. Ms. Gittens will be calling in. Ms. Gittens, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will go ahead and proceed. The first one will be, I'm not sure who's speaking today. Dr. Savage. And then for the records, if you would just state your name after you've been seated. And good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ken Savage, Chief Operations Officer. Thank you for having us here today. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the two folks that we have with us today to do this presentation on our draft version of this facility development scoping process. This is something that has been a labor of love for our division. I will tell you that it was a little bit of a surprise to me when we took over in the operations area and were so often questioned about when a critical decision would be made, when an official or unofficial blessing would be made, and where a school is located in so many different pieces. And when I looked to find a formal codified process, there really was not one in place, unless you would count a giant binder, an old binder during the Browder regime with Mike McNerney's names written on it. There was an old binder for how we opened up a new school and all the different processes that went into it back in the days when they were opening up five new schools in a year because of the massive expansion that was happening. And it was on paper, and that's what the process was. And that was the last time we had to do that. And the reason, of course, is that after that period, we had a massive retraction where we weren't opening as many schools. And so these processes were not necessarily needed because they weren't going through the level of scale of what we were seeing at that time. And so that gave us an opportunity now that we have seen the passage of the half penny sales tax and we've seen the growth return to our area, that tremendous demand. How do we engage our board? And how do we engage our internal leadership, our community? How do we engage various folks in this effort to ensure that we're getting a proper amount of communication, engagement at every step of the journey? I think you all are very familiar with Mr. Rickenbacher, and we kind of have a pretty well-established machine as to once he's got orders and a budget to go out and build and to do those things. But what about all the preliminary steps that occur? And so the two individuals sitting to my right with significant level of coordination with all the other divisions, schools, and through this work are putting together the first draft proposal of this new expansive, comprehensive process to allow you as a board to hear what we're suggesting, to provide input so we can modify this draft process and ensure that each board member really feels confidence that the full gamut of what's happening is kind of transparent for you and that you see all the opportunities you have to provide input and that how we are also gaining input from so many stakeholder groups that have this interest as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Eball, our Executive Director.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We are excited to do this. It actually started with Don and I kind of doing this informally for projects because we wanted to have a better way to communicate with those who would be applying for, through the RFQ process, a project and help them understand what the project was. Because when we would listen to the presentations and read their proposals, they were kind of generic and weren't always on point with exactly what was being asked for this project. And we realized that some of that was on us, that we hadn't done a very good job of explaining to them and giving them information about the specific information and details of what a project should be and what they were asking, being asked to do. So that's where it started. And then, once we started that, we realized, wait a second. In order to get to that point in the process, we really had to back it up to the very beginning of where an idea concept becomes an idea, just a thought, not even necessarily something we would ever bring to the board, to the public, to anyone outside of our own group, just kind of thinking about what might be needed for a facility development project as it moves forward in order to accomplish whatever goal it was that someone had idea for us. So the first thing was just to put on paper, what's a concept? What's an idea? And then the next major to develop that idea into a proposal and fleshing it out through a scope, which you have seen a few of our drafts by now. You've approved them for the Innovation School, you've approved them for Franklin Park, you've approved one for the Veterans Performing Arts Center, and you've seen the one that we did for Riverdale. So that's kind of the end game, but what we want to get you through is how do we get there? And then, once we, then we take you through the RFQ and the design and construction projects, just so that you understand that throughout this process, the other thing we heard was, when do others get to involve? When do others get to touch it, including yourselves, but also our stakeholder groups, whether they be the community of the school, the community at large, the community of our advisory groups? When do they get to have a chance to provide input onto these? So we're presenting this to you as a linear form, but it's not linear. In fact, the proposal and the project scope, we have them one after another, when in fact a lot of that is happening parallel. It's just the way we're presenting this information to you so that you can see that there's various components and various thought points, various milestones that we have to hit. But we could get to a milestone and decide, you know what? This isn't working anymore, and go backwards. We could get to a milestone, and everybody's so on board that we move forward with skipping some things. It just makes sure that we are all touching base and that people have chances to see things. We might go to one group before another group, where in this group, it says this one has to go that way. So what Don and I want everyone to understand is why you're seeing this in a very linear format? That's because we need a way to present it to people, but it doesn't, in real life, that's not how it lives. A project is a living, breathing process that can have, take twists and turns. Think about, think about just how you plan for a trip. You think you're going to do this, and then something comes up, oh, I'm going to do that. So that's kind of helping you understand that this is linear, but it's really not. It's really about milestones, and that's what we're going to present to you. And I don't know that you've been introduced to Don Williams before. He's our coordinator in the planning and facility development area, and he's going to explain that there's also a tool that we are using that marries this.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Don Williams, Facility Data Coordinator. Let me make sure we're on the right slide here. So yes, like Ms. Eball said, although this is linear and you can follow along with the presentation, on the left-hand side, we're going to, you can see the box that's going to be around the phase that we're talking about directly. And we'll just go through the different phases. Now, when you're looking at this, this was actually SNPs taken of the actual product that we use. So you might see some variances in the text size and things of that nature. It was, it was the most effective and efficient way to kind of bring this to you, so just to make you aware of that. And this is just the actual description of the phases that were, or the steps. This product also has columns that have places for notes. You're capturing the dates so you can do reports and Gantt charts and things of that nature. But all we're going to bring to you this afternoon is the actual steps. So in this first phase, like Ms. Eball alluded to in the concept, this is just simply an idea that may or may not one day become a project, and it gives us this opportunity initially for departments and staff to internally discuss, vet, and then refine a concept before it ever moves forward. So if, if at any time in the concept phase, and I won't read verbatim the steps there, you can kind of review those, but it could, it could die a quick death in the concept phase if things don't look like it's a feasible project, so.
We hear people say to us, I never heard of that idea. It may be because that idea never took root, that it was something that we talked about and quickly, either in Capitol Committee or even just amongst ourselves, we realized, you know what? That idea might have, might have merit, but it's not working in the way we're talking about it. So it might be merged with another project. It might be, it might just be sitting on the shelf for a little bit until we do something else with it. So when you, people say, well, I heard you were thinking about, and that might be exactly where it ended. We were thinking about it, and it never continued to anything else, which is what Don's going to talk to you now about the proposal.
And Kathy, if you don't mind, just the term that we use internally when we started coming up with this was "top secret." The reason why we would say "top secret" as a code is because it's very important that when you are in this vetting time period, you are not letting things get out that have not been properly vetted, even as ideas, that things might sound attractive. It sounds like a great idea, and someone grabs a hold of it. It's so important at our level, it was such a large organization, that we don't create this perspective that it must move forward when it hasn't been properly vetted. So it's very important internally, not in any type of secrecy, but really to try to be a trigger to the folks discussing it, that this has not yet graduated beyond that level of conceptual development. It's so important that staff, a multiplicity of staff from their various perspectives have that opportunity as well to do that safely, not worrying that it's going to all of a sudden show up as a funded initiative that has not been properly vetted.
So if, if a project or an initial concept actually makes it through the concept phase, then we move into a proposal. We start drafting that proposal. And this is where we're getting, we're getting some meat and potatoes, so to speak, with the project, and we're forming cross-divisional project teams. We're bringing it to the superintendent, the Capitol Committee, chiefs and cabinet. And you're going to see these, these steps and the people that we bring it to. That was what Ms. Eball alluded to. It doesn't always have to happen linear like this, but you're going to see that there's built-in redundancy, so we bring it back and forth to the correct people and to yourself as a board. So basically, we wanted to communicate that you're going to see it early and you're going to see it often as it gets refined and moves through the, moves through the different phases.
It's in this phase that we start the initial drafting of that document that you've seen, but you probably, when we first present it to you, won't see it in the document because it's not a done deal. And the idea, when you finally see a scope, is that that's happening. We want you, but you may hear about it in a presentation. We may bring it to you in a present, in a briefing. We might bring it to you at a workshop. Or, as we did recently in our one-on-ones, we were discussing how we possibly might expand middle school capacity in the East Zone. We did that in a one-on-one. So there's multiple ways, just because there's a step here that says we're going to present it to different groups, it doesn't mean that how we present it to that group has, has been defined, because it really will depend on what that particular project is and what, how it is best to move that project forward. We have tried really hard to recognize the need to be, to provide a definitive procedure for things to happen, but to still allow a project to be what a project is and allow for it to have and take a life of its own as it, as projects do.
And you can see the last step there is, receive board consensus in support of the revised draft proposal, and then we move into the engagement process.
So in the engagement effort, again, we have identified a number of areas that we could engage with. We can engage with the community as a whole, as we did when we, when we did VPAA recently. We brought that to the entire community. It could be that we're just going to bring it to a school community and discuss it specifically with that school, which we've also done on projects, as we're just trying to understand what their specific needs are. Or we could bring it to community advisory groups, or we can bring it to all of them. It really, again, will be dependent upon what that project is, where it is in, what kind of project it's going to be, what, who is it trying to achieve, and who needs to provide us input. So it doesn't mean that every project is going to look exactly the way, the same way. What we're saying, though, is that every project does have a community and does need stakeholder input. And when we've completed that stakeholder input and we've gotten that engagement and we've learned from other people outside of our team who, what they think of it, we will bring that information to you. We will also let you know when we're, when we're reviewing the draft proposal with you that this is who we're going to bring it to. These are the right stakeholders that we've identified to bring that engagement process to, so you have a chance to give us some feedback about what we're thinking about in terms of the engagement process itself.
And after we've completed the engagement phase of the, or the engagement portion of the proposal phase, it just simply moves into a final phase where we're making the final adjustments to the draft. And then, again, those redundancies, we're bringing it to the same, the same parties for final input of a draft proposal. And then the most agreed-upon and appropriate proposal can or will proceed, or here, still at this point, we could make a decision not to move forward at this time. You know, a lot of things can still happen at that. But again, it's bringing, bringing it back in front as a final draft to all the concerned parties.
I mentioned earlier that the scoping phase, if this wasn't done as a linear document, really could have shown overlap with the proposal phase, and that's because so much of what's happening in the due diligence and the scoping phase is happening at the same time the proposal is being developed. So, but this, it's, we highlighted it as a different phase because it's really different work. In the proposal phase, you're thinking about the program, you're thinking about the community engagement, you're talking about it kind of at more of a 50,000 level. When you're in the scoping phase, you're getting into the nitty-gritty. You're looking at the, the land uses that you need, the zoning classifications you have, the other entitlements you need with your local governments. So you're working with your local governments to ensure that everything that you need from them, we have. We're talking, we're looking at the land, and if there's a need to identify or purchase additional land, we're looking at that during this period. If there's a need to do permitting from an environmental standpoint or traffic standpoint, we're looking at that. We're, so we're, this, this scoping phase is really about understanding the land, the building, and the campus needs and completing that assessment from a very technical standpoint. So you can see, it's a little different than when you're developing your proposal, but they both need to happen in order for you to complete your proposal. We're also working with DOE on this, in this phase. This is when we would be getting our Castaldi work done. This is when we would be updating our EFIS and evaluating EFIS, completing a hotspot survey if it's an ordinary and the five-year plan survey. So all of that technical work is being done here in the scoping phase, which then ultimately completes your scoping and property documents. So this is when we bring it to you and say, now we have a project. Now we know, we are ready to move forward. And once again, like Don has said repeatedly, we can decide at this point that we don't want to move forward because now we've done our budget. We understand our budget better, we have a better understanding of how all of this is going to fit together. And working with you, you can decide, yes, we're going to move this into the, into an RFQ phase, or, you know what? We're not, we're not, we're going to hold on to this for a while. Or depending on, on when we need it, we could decide we want to put it into the five-year capital budget and capital plan in the, in an appropriate location. So there's lots of things that we could do at this point. We could either move forward directly into the RFQ, we could put it into the five-year plan, or we could decide that right now, we're going to put a hold on it and we're not going to proceed with it at all. But all of that is a decision point that you would have the right materials and the right understanding from both a technical and a programming standpoint to be able to make that decision.
And if that decision is to move forward to the procurement phase, then it goes, obviously, that final scope, everything that's been done up to this point is put into the final scope, and that's sent over to procurement where they will, the procurement will advertise it, will go through the whole RFQ process with quote submissions, evaluation of those submissions, and then the decision, deciding which one is going to be selected for which project, or also making the decision, is this something that meets the dollar threshold that can be handled with a continuing contract for service, or will it move into the bid portion of the process? The procurement and the subcontract phase, this is obviously if we're going to go that bid, the bid process versus the continuing contract. And you can see the steps there. I think you're probably all pretty familiar with, with RFQ, where we select the architect, the construction manager, and the building official. The contract phase is where the total project cost estimate will be determined. Obviously, the contracts need to be signed, and then ultimately, we'll get that, that notice to proceed.
And then we move into our final phase, which is design and construction, which you are all very much aware of and have a understanding of this section. But what we really want to highlight in the design phase is that this is really the last opportunity for the community as a whole to have meaningful input, because we're going to be evaluating the site plan, we're going to be evaluating the project as a whole, we're going to be evaluating the design of the buildings or the design of the campus master plan, whatever it is. So we have a chance for the community stakeholders, once again, to really engage in the process and provide input to make sure that what they said to us during the proposal phase and the scoping phase actually comes to fruition in the completion of the project and the design. So by the time we complete the design, we're at 100%, and then we go into construction.
And this is the final phase, and as Dr. Savage alluded to, Mr. Rickenbacher, you know, once he's given those, those marching orders to go ahead with the project and start building it, that part of the process is pretty laid out and pretty standard. You can read those. Couple of things just to bring your attention. The total project cost estimate will be established then. You can do those, those community engagement things, you know, holding open houses, things of that nature. And then ultimately, it all brings us to the, completing the project, closing it out, making sure we got all the documentation.
And the important thing to understand about the construction phase is all the way up to the construction phase, things can change. You know, even in the design phase, we can decide that we, we need to make an alteration or we need to fix something. We, we have that flexibility all the way up through design, but once you get to construction, now your opportunity to make changes are much more diminished, and you, the ability to, as Ken calls it, pivot. We don't have, we, we were able to pivot all along. We can pivot in the concept phase, we can pivot in the proposal phase, we can pivot in scoping, we can pivot in procurement, we can pivot in design. But by the time we get to construction, we need to have a really firm idea that this is what's moving forward. You know, we've talked about recently two projects, VPAA and Riverdale, and how before we get into the construction, we're going to do campus master plans. So those are definitely areas in that design phase that we might make some pivots. Some other projects, like the construction of a new school, we're not going to pivot all that much during the design phase because we have a much firmer idea of what's going on. But if, but depending on what type of project, you can pivot all the way through design. But by the time you get to construction, now you're doing something, and it's got to be solid.
Well, let me just clarify on the pivot comment. So one of the things that I think, you know, we just want to impress upon you is that we always have the ability to change at any given time, but when you get to this phase, it's much more costly. Sometimes the changes are outside of our hands. For example, a pandemic occurs, you start to see supply chain shortages, all of a sudden the cost of materials can be rising. So you may have to pivot or adapt your planning, evolve your thinking, be creative, because the conditions underneath you have changed. And so the things that you brought forward simply are not able to carry forward the way that you had envisioned them. And really, that change can occur anywhere in that process. To back up a step from the design and the procurement, occasionally you'll have a design that is based on data, is based on what we think is important, but political realities can have an impact. Additionally, new data, a great example would be Estero. Back in, when the original plan was designed, we had an elementary and a middle school that was in design, and it's, we needed two exactly normal prototypes. But when we started to work with Davis Demographics, what we found was newer data, data that gave us more precision about specifically where the students reside. And what we found was that it wasn't necessarily immediately a full elementary and a full middle right out of the gate. Now, would it have been simpler on our side to just say, let's continue with what we already did because that's what we had brought forward in two separate schools exactly as done? Well, yes, we could have, but then we would have had two underutilized, under-capacity schools when really what you needed was some elementary and some middle in that specific area. Or you would have to bus more students from further north, you know, which is still South Fort Myers. But why do that when you have the ability to potentially save money and build more strategically to service that demand? So at every step of the way, while you have these, these plans, it's so important to understand the logic that really is underpinning the entire project. That's why it's so important to have all these steps mapped out and to have those built-in redundancies so that people don't have it in their mind that it's one thing and one thing only, and it never shall be anything else. We could literally go project by project and give you these strategic adjustments that have been made, whether based on new data, based on changing market conditions or anything else, to really help you understand that that's why it's so important to have the quality of thinking in the team that does the specific work and makes it explicit so that everyone knows exactly why we're doing what we're doing.
So, so at that, that's, that's the end of our process, and Don is going to get into the actual technical tool that we use, but before we get into the technical tool, we'd like to give you an opportunity to ask questions about the process. We, we wanted you to hear the whole thing as a We, we wanted you to hear the whole thing as a, as a unit because so many things have those, like Ken said, redundancies. We wanted you to hear the whole process before you ask questions. But before we get into the technical tool, if you'd like to answer any question, we'd, we have questions.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Fisher, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I really don't have a question, but I just want to say, you know, we're always looking at continuous improvement. So with your story about the old binder that we used more than a dozen years ago, I, I see that we are working towards continuous improvement. And this, this presentation is a step-by-step expression of how we have to have a plan or decide what it is we're going to offer before we can get stakeholder in border, input and approval. And as you were talking, I was kind of relating it, I've, I've built three homes down here. And I was kind of relating it to that because it is a work in progress and things happen with permitting and especially in Cape Coral. But anyway, you know, I, I think that this is a really good way of presenting this and, and you have upgraded and updated it and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Gittens? Yes, I was going to call on you next. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Is there an echo for you guys?
No, you're good. You're perfect, thank you.
Okay. All right. First off, thank you so very much for the presentation. As you all know, this is something I've asked about pretty much the time that I've, I really appreciate this. And I think it does show when we, there's always room for improvement, that we have processes in place and yet if we stop and go back and, and look at it, we can always improve. And I really am grateful for this presentation. I have a couple of questions. I know it would be hard to do a, a timeline per se. But I'm wondering if, say for example, if it's a, a school, if you go, I think you said, like it, it takes 18 months to build a specific type of school. So will you kind of overlay that template on this process and to say, this is the time we are giving ourselves besides the 18 months to actually build and then the planning piece, just to have some type of basic timelines on it?
Ms. Gittens, we, we discussed the timeline question and there are projects that we have a very firm idea of what the timeline is. When we are building a new construction, generally, we're at a year or two, a year and a half for design, depending on how big the campus is going to be. And we're about 18 months to 24 months for the construction. So on that one, it's very easy for us, once we get into design, to know. And the, and the procurement phase, if it's an RFQ, it's, it's four to six months, generally speaking. I think that the reason that we ended up not doing a timeline on this is because there are, we want to be able to use this in many different types of projects. So think about the VPAA project or Riverdale where the timelines aren't as concrete because we have to do a master plan upfront. We need, before we really get into the details of it, we first need to really understand what that campus is. We're making so many campus changes to those two schools. But definitely, different types of projects are going to, are going to have generally different timelines. I think the most unpredictable ones are the ones like a VPA or a Riverdale. A new, a, a, a new addition to a campus is, is also a much more predictable one. I think what's always unpredictable is the scoping and, and develop, project development phase because as, as Donna and Ken and I've tried to explain, you, a project can pivot 1,000 different ways all through that process. But we're trying to align it with the capital improvement process and with the capital budgeting process so that we can always bring it forward and you can see where the changes are in the annual update to those documents.
And Ms. Eba, I, I kind of interpreted the question slightly differently from that. So I just want to see if this is landing on what you're thinking, Ms. Gittens. While it's true, the, we, timelines will have some fluidity from project to project. Our ability to communicate the projected timelines will be apparent within the next piece of presentation we'll be getting and through the smart sheet process. That will capture the various different milestones that, that have been, we've kind of run through them as we've explained them in this presentation, but they will be visually manifest through the product that we are using, that it will correspond. And you've probably seen some workups we've done where we've kind of mapped out that 18-month projected construction. We can, we can tweak those timelines, but, but our full intention is to always have a visual, a visualization that corresponds to each specific project after it's been formally adopted, budgeted, as, as in, as we've kind of stated. Once it's graduated beyond the, the scope and it's actually been bitted out and scheduled into the budget and, and scheduled for work, we should be able to provide visualizations in the form of a Gantt chart that really show you each of these phases kind of mapped out. We, we would even begin some draft work on this prior to that formalization so that we have kind of an idea of when a school would come online, even when we're back, when this site master plan may be done. So it, it won't be the same for every project, but we will have the ability to communicate that visually with that piece as well and with specific milestones identified. Mr. Williams, did you want to clarify any of that as well?
Yes, I, I would. Just a caveat, that we, we continue to have those discussions cross-departmentally with the duration portion of each of these steps. And like Dr. Savage said, this, this tool and this product will give us that, that visual depiction of, you know, are, are we meeting the duration, the planned duration? We, we have the ability with this tool to set different settings with it so you can see if you're at a green, amber, red status in any of the phases that we're in. And, and we'll be able to visually communicate that with, with all the stakeholders. So yeah, the, the tool really gives us some, some things that, to our ability that we, we didn't have previously or they weren't developed previously. So we're pretty excited about that, actually.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, you said you had another question?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. And I, I like the part of the, the process that, on the need, the feasibility, the need and the build that's, it's all very, I really appreciate that. On the, you kind of last answer about the visual, and I was visual, visualizing it like an org chart type thing. And actually, there's an exit strategy in each one of the phases, if I correct. And I, I think about it like going in a funhouse and there's exit signs. If you get scared or something goes wrong, you can exit here. And that's kind of the essence. And I really appreciate the way that that was put together, that if we get further down the line and realize, well, this really isn't as feasible as we thought, then there's an exit strategy. And I, I appreciate the process and what is, how soon are you going to be moving into this?
We've already started using this. That's why we've been using the examples that we have. They, they've already started, Donna and I started using this process last fall. The first two projects that, and it's an evolving process, but the first two projects that we used for this were Riverdale and FMTC.
Ms. Gittens, do you have any other?
Thank you, and I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I was just going to say, good morning. Good afternoon. Thank you very much for being here. I think that what you have laid out here is what so impressed the Astero community when you went out there. There's a sense in the public that we swoop in one day and just decide we're going to put a school here when in fact, all of this work has taken place behind the scenes and you, and, and the public isn't necessarily seeing, seeing it, even though we've given them opportunities to engage up to that point. So seeing this on paper, it's kind of, it just jogs my memory. You know, like as you walk through the process, yep, I remember doing that, yep, I remember doing that. And the fact that you've written it down is super helpful. Mr. Williams, welcome. It's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
So if I could go through a couple of questions that I have on specific slides. One question is unrelated to the others. So I'll start on page eight, if I may. The site selection committee, my understanding of the site selection committee is that it is only required and used according to policy when we're purchasing a new piece of land. So like in Astero, for example, or Veterans Park, or anyplace else where we already have the land and we're putting a school there, we don't engage the site selection committee only when we're purchasing. Could you talk about that, please?
So there's a, and I'm glad you brought that up because when we actually shared these, this draft with our colleagues, that was a question that they asked because they, there is, you hear the word site selection and you think, I'm selecting A versus B for the project here. When in fact, what you're doing is you're selecting A versus B for a school purpose, not necessarily that it's going to be for the school that, the, the school Y or school Z. It's for a school purpose. And it could be not even for a school. Often, land is purchased well before we even know that it is necessary or what kind of school is necessary. As we've been working on proximity, we're identifying in the communities, where do we need to have land? And we're purchasing land and looking to purchase land in those areas. But it doesn't necessarily mean that we're thinking that's going to be an elementary school, or that's going to be a middle school, or that's going to be a high school. And oftentimes, right now, we're looking for land that could be multiple school sites so that we're giving ourselves flexibility down the road. It's very difficult usually to purchase land when you need it. You, you often hear us say, once it's something else, it's not going to be a school. And because of the size of land that we need, you know, we need generally between 20 and 75 acres, depending on our use, it's really hard to find that kind of size if those, if those land uses are already taken. So we're in a lot of ways prospecting for projects. That's why at some points, we look, we, we evaluate and say, which land pieces do we not need? That things have not gone the way that we thought 10 years ago they would. And now we know that we could pivot off of these properties and look to sell them. So yes, the site selection process is not about purchasing or a site for a use or looking at different sites that we own for a use. It's about whether or not the piece of land that we're evaluating is appropriate for any use. Does that make sense?
Totally makes sense. So for example, Three Oaks Parkway in Astero, site selection committee met when that property was purchased way back in the day, correct? And that was the appropriate time for that to occur?
Yes.
Okay. Page five is, you specifically say at the bottom, receive board consensus. When I engage in a consensus activity as a member of this board, what I feel like I'm doing is I'm signaling to you, and we as a body are signaling to you, yes, please proceed with this process. If you don't get that kind of approval from us, you could very well engage in the project scope procurement and go on down the road. And then when the final vote comes, we say, no, we never liked that, we were never going to support that. And you've wasted all kinds of man-hours and time and money and all of that. So really, the, the consensus is just to check, does the board support this project and should we as staff move forward, knowing full well that when it comes time to vote on the bottom line number, I may very well vote no. Is that a fair assessment of what you're looking for from us in consensus?
Yes, I often think of consensus as direction, that you're get, you're, we're giving, we're being given direction to either proceed or not to proceed. Dr. Savage?
Yeah, I would just, I would just clarify a little bit there of, of are we on the right track? Are there additional questions? By the time it's brought even for this consensus, it's already been through a significant level of internal vetting as a concept that's now maturing into a proposal. We want to make sure that all the hard work of staff is, that's already moving forward to try to see if we have a viable proposal to put in front of you, is it really in line with the vision of kind of what the board wants? It gives us our chance to take a temperature in time and say, are there concerns maybe that staff hasn't identified? And we've had a number of those cases where there are different thoughts and it gives us a chance to even bring more information, more data prior to being too far down the road where more dollars have been expended than what we would have wanted. It just gives you an opportunity for more input than what we typically would have done in the past. And, and I think that having seven board members, it's a great opportunity to really hear the thought among the seven board members through that action, through that type of work together as a team. And it just helps us as a staff to have that clarity.
And as I mentioned earlier, we don't necessarily, you know, consensus can happen with every, all seven of you in the same room and you're giving us the thumb up, thumb down, subsides way. But it could also happen, as we've done in one-on-ones, where we get a general feeling from talking to you all without you talking to each other. We understand that yes, in the end, we can, we can say back to you through these one-on-ones, we received the consensus, we needed to either move forward, to change, to answer further questions, or to stop the project altogether.
And that's all before we bring you something binding, something that really puts money and, and time, energy where, you know, shovels go in the dirt. It's really still more internal at that phase before we've brought you the next formal piece. Because the formal things that have been brought to the board that are act, that are deemed needing, requiring action have already existed. It's really trying to get some additional opportunity for feedback because we've heard through this time period, what a, what an obvious opportunity for interest there is at the board level. We want to be responsive to that. But, but it didn't fundamentally change many of the milestones that do require formal board action that already existed through many of the mechanisms you're already aware of in terms of procurement and, and all those pieces.
All right. And if I'm, last question is, again, on consensus. As I look at slides seven, nine, and 13, I see opportunities for consensus there as well. So if we get to slide seven, for example, and something about the final draft proposal is very off-putting to me, and I make strong arguments to my colleagues, this is bad, you might seek consensus from the board at that point. And if it's a thumbs down, a majority thumbs down, you would say, okay, we can't move on, or we have to change this, or something along those lines. So while board consensus is not specifically requested, it could be sought at any one of these points. Is that, is that fair? And again,
Yes.
I say yes or no in a board consensus. That doesn't mean I can't say no when the final vote comes in front of me.
Absolutely. And, and this is all being presented to you even today for your feedback piece. This is a draft process. Well, well, Ms. Eba mentioned that we have been going through and utilizing kind of this, this logic and developing the scoping documents that we've been able to put forward, things that did not exist here prior, that, you know, informed the procurement phase, all these things that we've done to try to kind of put clarity to it. It's also why we're here today in this setting, so that you have an opportunity to hear the language. Are you comfortable with the level of input you're getting? Do we want it, you know, memorialized in some other way too? I think all those things we bring at your pleasure today as well.
Well, you've got my support on the draft that you've presented today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Chivinelli?
Thank you. Actually, I love this because it's needed, it's just for the transparency aspect and just, you know, that we have a process. So I, I appreciate the hard work. So that led me to a couple of questions and, and actually, so we're in the, because as you know, the last couple of meetings, I, I'm not for selling any property right now because I believe property, we need to hang on to it because I'm concerned because it's difficult to find, just like you just made that statement. So when, where in the process are we working with our broker in properties? I mean, are y'all talking to each other? I didn't see that in this process because I think that's part of the plan, right? So I'm just trying to figure out where that involvement is in, in this.
So it's in the scoping documents and it specifically does call out on the, the first one, purchase necessary land, complete due diligence, all of that. And, and in and of itself, you know, the, the evaluation of property is, is a, is a process, is a project. So, you know, it's, it's both, we are both evaluating specific project, property in here. An example would be when we developed the scope for Riverdale, we realized that in order for us to achieve our goals in transportation and improving the transportation system there, we would need additional land. And so we went looking for it and there it was, sitting right next to our property, not used. We were able to buy that piece of land. So that's an example of that. But just in the evaluation of land, like I mentioned, in the, in the proximity project, we are evaluating land. So land is always a center of our evaluations because as, as I just said, once something is not, is, is something isn't a school, it's not going to become a school. So, so it's, it's, it's a, it's always paramount in our discussion making.
And I just want to clarify, number one first, Ms. Chivinelli, thank you so much for the, the positive comments. Also, you highlighted something that I really wanted to mention as well. We understand that you are seven discerning individuals and that as individual board members, you don't, you know, sign away your right to have an individual opinion either. And, and we actually really appreciate the diverse opinions that you all offer. So we may come away with one individual of the board feeling very strongly about, against a position. I think from our standpoint, we are perfectly okay with that. It, it's really not, our goal isn't trying to win everyone over and say, your position is wrong. We want to validate that there are want to validate that there are varying perspectives. Even among our team, we don't always agree on the right way to go. We have vicious debates with academic services about, you know, what's the best plan. But the thought process is only through hearing that transparent opinion that validates and says, you know what, I don't agree with this. Well, I do, and here's why. Having that kind of a conversation is so powerful and rich that we really welcome that type of thought process. And this gives you lots of opportunities to have that because really the way we view it, the board consensus is really what we are, are looking for. We really want to know as you as a body, is this kind of a clear decision of what you want to go, knowing that any opinions that maybe are different than that majority are also very important considerations for us as we, what additional data do we have to bring? Because maybe that will change. But if we don't know that, we're not always coming expecting seven oh. If that is, we probably aren't pushing hard enough to, to lead in an aggressive way. So thank you for highlighting that example. And we really appreciate the, the positive comments as well as the, the healthy push. We really appreciate that, too.
Right. And I still have a couple more. So, okay, so back to this process, since you started using it in the fall, how did we, how did we use this process when we, we abandoned Block Lane and moved to Three Oaks? Because I think that's vital. This process would have helped, I think, a little bit better there. And I don't know that we actually had incorporated this process in that, in those changes. And yes, things change, right? I mean, Ms. Patricca just brought that up, you know, the consensus versus vote is, could make, things could change when it happens. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, and so we have to rely on your information to help us change with it.
That's a great, that's a really great example to bring up. So that, this, the Block Lane decision actually predated, that went all the way back to the spring. It happened to overlay right when we were going through the pandemic, the early stages of the pandemic. And there were a number of pieces. This again goes to the changing conditions around. So what we had at that particular site was some real obvious political realities as well as, you know, our partners in this, you know, we really had to work with our partners as we do often in any, whether it's a county, whether it's any of these municipal interests. They have the ability to speak for their perspective, exactly what they want. And they have every bit of discretion that they can exercise within their, their, their ability. And as partners in that effort, we have that same obligation to kind of push on them. And so that really was something that preceded this process. But I will tell you, part of our reason for doing this process was precisely that type of project.
And that's really why.
Because we want to be transparent. We don't want anyone to ever come back and say, well, we, we thought it was going to be this, and then when you came back, it was this. We really want to be transparent. The example I brought up earlier with the data, you know, just the move from two distinct big schools to a K8 was a strategic, we could, it would have been much simpler for us to not have made that move, to keep it as two distinct pieces. But the reality is, as we studied the data that undergirded that effort, it was very evident to us that it was more cost-effective. It freed up more capital for us to do even more projects that we value right now and still be okay for a 10-year, 10-years' worth of growth in that particular area. So it was just a strategic move. In terms of the, the flipping of the sites and those unique considerations, all of that, we would think through this type of process would be more readily bringing in front of you at each stage of, of the game. Part of it also for us is, we want to be further along in some of these things when it comes to, before we ever get to the construction phase. I would argue that that's one of the, the things that we've really tried to identify is, the more we really understand exactly where the students live and that growth and where it's occurring, the more we can be very precise and proactive in where we are putting our schools so that we aren't in a situation where we need a school and we don't have a school. Things like such as the East Zone, where we know we need more schools built right now, but we can only build them so fast. And there's all these other pieces, as you see all the steps that precede it. And so those are all just examples of things that we really like to, that hopefully this process will fix and put us in a better position. Anything else you want to add on that?
I, well, I think I, to Dr. Savage's point, it was projects like that, that, that got Mr. Williams and I to sit down and start thinking about this along with Dr. Savage because in our minds, we were doing this. But it, which, which says it should have been easy to write it down, but it took us six months to write down what we do. We had to think through projects like that one. We had to think through projects like FMTC. We had to think through projects and say, what, what have we done? Where, where did we go? How did we develop that? So I think it is ju, it is precisely because of issues like the Block Lane. Because honestly, we should never have gotten out of the scoping phase without that decision being made. That should, we, we should have known, because it's a hard stop. If the, if the local government isn't going to give us the land use designation we need for a piece of land, that's a hard stop. There's, we can't get through that. We don't have the authority to force them to give us the land use designation that we need. So we should have known that that was a hard stop before we got into design. And, and so I'm not saying that the decision was wrong because we had no authority over the decision. The decision was the Village of Astero's to make, not ours. But if, but we should have known about that decision prior to getting into the design phase. We should have known that that was an issue for us before we ever commenced on design. So, and it was things like that that helped us build this process. So that, that's why you see due diligence before design. That's why you're not waiting to design to get into all of those decision processes because we need to know them before we get into that process. Scott, Scott said to me once, just tell me what you want and I can build it. But if you don't tell me what you want, I can't build it. So that, and, and that, that thinking was a lot of what was, helped us think about what has to happen before we ever get there.
Including permitting, all, all the development. And just to be fair to the team, you know, the original plan, that well extended beyond anyone here sitting at our table. But that said, because it's a multi-year effort and because there have been new people who have come and gone in different positions, it's so important to have a process that's transparent and that everyone understands what that process is so that everyone kind of coming in, they don't have to, like for us, we had to build the process from nothing. It's so important, or from a binder that was more than a decade old and didn't have any of this specificity. It was very generic. This is far more precise and far more descriptive, and that's the work that we want to do for you all.
Okay. Ms. Chevinnelli, you have one more question?
So, and that leads, you made me think about something regarding the, the Block Lane. So, because I was thinking, well, are we going to still try to pick up that property that we wanted Astero, the Village of Astero to do, to build our school? But if we can't do that, then what are we doing with that property? Is that part of this process?
So we are, we still believe, and this is aside because this isn't, but we still believe that that property is valuable for us because of its proximity to Astero High School. And we don't have a high school in that area that would allow us to expand except for that one because of that property. So what we're doing right now is exactly that. We are working with the village to re, to, to put the comp plan amendment in place that we need to have so that at the time that we decide that the Village of, that Astero High School needs to be expanded, we've got that in place.
I think that's really, oh, one other thing. So we did vote for Block Lane to, for the school and everything, but I don't recall that we voted to actually, when we switched from Block Lane to Three Oaks, that we actually voted to do that. I thought, when I went back and looked, that was like a consensus thing. Do we need to vote to move that? I mean, isn't that something that we should have done? And that was a question I had brought to you a while back. And I haven't ever got an answer. And that's on, it came up today for me.
June 12th is the day that we asked for, after three workshops that were held in May and June. We held, we held three workshops and I've listened to the tapes on all of them.
Yeah, but we don't vote during.
And it wasn't, it wasn't a vote. It was a consensus.
Right. We don't vote during.
But that was what we were under the, understanding at the time that needed to happen. So I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, we are, on the 27th, we're going to our transmittel hearing with the Village of Astero for the comp plan amendment to be sent to the state. And we are, you know, we're working forward on the Three Oaks property based on the consensus vote that happened on June 12th of 2020 last year.
Yeah, but I, I don't know how that works, just a consensus vote to start doing a project, like moving from one project that we voted on to a project that we are, took a consensus on. Because like Ms. Patricca just brought up, things change. You know, that doesn't mean that we're all going to vote for that. I mean, so that's my concern.
Sure.
And that could, and that could be a, a community issue is what I'm worried about.
Absolutely. Just to clarify there, there are still, even though what the consensus vote that you're referring to occurred, I believe on June 12th, it's right in that time period, the conclusion of multiple workshops. The big, bigger issue is there's still then, any of the things we brought forward to the board specifically in terms of contracted work, such as, you know, the building officials, the architect, and the construction manager for that specific site that gets identified in those contracts. Each of those pieces that do require formal board action within that contracting piece do identify the specific parcel and then any adjustments to it. While it's true, the specific distinction of saying, do we bring it as a separate board item to transfer that site? That would be something that would be feedback today. If that's something you'd want us to put into the process, we certainly could. Every time we have to come back and then ask for, you know, additional contractors to work in that, that is identified as part of that package. So for us, that's a piece of it that if there was a, if there was not approval of us to do the work on the site, then that would be something that, there will still be documents that come in front of the board that would, the board would have an opportunity to deny approval for.
Yeah, but those things still would have to happen regardless. That we, wouldn't they, they, we would still have to have those votes. You know, we'd have to vote for the, the architect and so forth. So I just, my concern regarding the community transparency and the community's view on this is that we should, we should have voted to move that so that, I think that would have helped this along a little bit more and shown the process. So that, and I may be wrong. I'm just bringing this up because I've, I've been questioned this and I went, did my own research. And yes, I, it was just a workshop and consensus. So I just am concerned over what we should vote, and I don't know the legal ramifications of all what we should vote and what we should be doing consensus. I would rather be doing more voting than consensus because I think it becomes blurry and gray. And that's where this issue, I think, has arose, actually. So.
We certainly can work with Ms. DeBree, Bruno, on this process. And if there are specific steps in this, in this that we need to get a vote, we can ask her to tell us. When, we, we see voting in a very limited number of these spaces, but I think she and I are trying to schedule a meeting regarding a different topic later in the week, and we can certainly have a discussion about this at that time.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much for all your work on this.
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Okay. Are in smart sheets. So we have about three minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay. Basically on the question that Ms. Chevinnelli brought up, and there's two things. One, the site selection committee that was mentioned before, and I think we need to revisit and look at what site selection committee is and should be. We're revising the whole process, and I think we need to look at that. And it's not, in my mind, the same as an advisory board. And it's more of a local community group, not the advisory board that represents the whole district. So that's one comment I would like to see some revisiting of. And on consensus, I believe we overdo consensus so much on this board. And to kind of get out of that with this process, Ms. Eba was talking about hard stops. Can we not look at certain steps along the way where there should be a hard stop? For example, you know, you've gone through the first two phases and all of this is in line and we really need, you really need to know if we're wanting to go forward with the project. That is a hard stop to me that takes a, a vote, a hard vote, not a consensus. And then along the way, if that can be placed in there, at this point, we need to have a hard vote. And not saying that there's things that won't change or we go along the way. I understand that. But I think we need to put at least maybe two hard stops along the way at various things. And you can discuss that with your team. But I think that first initial, when we bring it to the board, is this a project? Is it feasible? Is it needed? Should we fund it? Should be a hard vote. So anyway, thank you so much for this again.
Ms. Fisher?
So this brings to me the question about the scoping phase. So when you're looking at due diligence and feasibility study, I was thinking to myself, there's, there's some constants here. So one of the constants is that the work of the district must continue on regardless. I mean, when growth demands, then we need to build schools. And I have a question. So when we have property that we owned before in the past, is it not been the case a few times where either zoning changes, requirements from whatever municipality or county or impacted the ability of us to use that property, size and things like that? And then the other thing is that's constant, is the change that occurs in staff, and I think you mentioned that, Dr. Savage, and in boards. So I would like clarification about as a board, and, and my instinct based on, again, my training and experience with FSBA, et cetera, is that do we need a hard vote for every single step of your work? Because that doesn't even make sense to me because first of all, it wastes time. And, and we don't have the expertise that you have at your fingertips and the information with the current codes, et cetera. So, and even the state of Florida, I think, has made changes in some of the requirements in school buildings. So I, I'm not sure about that, if we need a hard vote for every step of your work. That just doesn't, I mean, it, it sounds counterproductive. So I'm going to ask Attorney Bruno if, if that can be part of what she researches.
Madam Chair, may I?
Just a second. Give me, give me one second.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah. So in that vein, we, we have a policy with respect to how we engage with the superintendent and his staff and at what point we make decisions. I think if a board member wants to change the policy, they need to bring a recommendation to the board to change the policy. And I think that's how we should proceed on something like this. I don't think we should just sit and have a casual conversation at the board table about it. Essentially, we're talking about what is our responsibility? What is the superintendent's responsibility? If we're going to change the balance, we need to do it in, in a policy manner, not in a process manner.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And.
Could I just like respond to that because, and I think we have to make sure that we're right.
Ms. Skins, I'm going to come.
Well, before the decision does, because actually, that was a misrepresentation of what I said. I, I said that there would possibly be one or two times during the whole process, and you can go back and watch what I said. I never said step by step that we take a hard vote. That was a misrepresentation of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm finished. Okay. And Mr. Williams, if you could continue, please, on the smart sheets?
Yes, very quickly, just to finish up on the actual tool itself. It's far more than just a spreadsheet. It is, it is a project management software where you can, you can house documents, you can house pictures, videos. You can use it as a communication tool to keep the concerned members always up to date on where, where we're at in the project. It's going to have a lot of improved visibility, tracking and reporting mechanisms and things that we can show you that will visually show you a lot quicker. You know, the, the whole adage that a picture's worth a thousand words. We can show you charts and graphs and things of that nature and where we're at with the project. So, so we're pretty excited about the capabilities of this product. That's pretty much all I wanted to share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I, I think this is really great. And I, I believe that this, we're on the right track of, you know, making sure that we're doing what we need to do. And I think this, your tracking report will be essential to us as well, or to you all. So thank you for that. Are, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah. So this is what I've been looking for. You know, when, when we have our monthly updates on where we are with respect to construction, with renovation, et cetera. So my question is, instead of giving us that pictorial demonstration of where we are, which really doesn't place us any place anywhere within a timeline, can we have a very rough breakdown of this? Is, is that where we're going? Like on a monthly basis, you can give this to us? And if we have questions, we can ask them. Otherwise, we move on.
Absolutely. That's, that's one of the full intentions behind this. That was part of the birth of it, was to have it not just for you, but for me, for Dr. Atkins. When we're, you know, you, projects move around, we want to see how it's impacted those various phases. It's also a good accountability tool, to be honest. One of the things that's
One of the things that Scott, you know, think of the, a good analogy, is like a relay race. He has a four-person relay. One of the things that unfortunately Scott has been in a position numerous times, is that he is given a compressed window. So let's say that the first leg of the journey, the person falls down, second leg of the journey, they run the wrong way for a minute, the third leg of the journey, they kind of make up some ground. Well, then they go to the anchor, the fourth person, he's got to run and say, "Well, normally you run a six-minute leg of this journey, but you got to do it in five in order for us to, to, to close it." It's, it's not necessarily fair to him to put him in that situation. We've had cases where projects have been in duress, where he's put under an unrealistic constraint, and so it creates accountability so that each leg of the journey, in some cases other divisions, in some case, planning, and it, it just puts accountability in a visual way that's very simple. So this, the advantage of what Don talked about in the smart sheet piece is, this is the ability to get down to a very granular level, but it's also from different customer groups, the thought process is that different groups need different level of detail. Like, for example, we're not asking you to manage the project. In fact, it would be inappropriate, I would argue, for you to be weighing in specifically on, on various aspects of it, but at a high-level view, you absolutely need this information. And it's really important that you understand in broad strokes where it's at within that process, so you can have that input and not have to think, "Well, where, what was it that he said? I have to go back and look for..." No, it's on one page, front and back, we've, we've been putting various drafts of this together of what it'll look like, of all of our projects in that, that format. So I hope that meets the specification.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Well, and I was just thinking about what was said just a few minutes ago regarding, and this has nothing to do with you, you guys did a great job, this is nothing to do, this has a conversation that we were just recently having. I mean, we actually took a vote and spent millions of dollars on a piece of property that we did a hard stop, and so, because of the process. I mean, so I, I think it is very important that we just don't do consensus votes to jump here and jump there. We need, this is part of the transparency aspect that we struggle with, and so I think that we need to be very, you know, held accountable, and not making decisions that are hastily, apparently. Before, we had the, the whole, the Village of Astero behind us and knowing where everybody, so nobody, we weren't on the same page. This process, I think, will get us there and get us on the same page. So I appreciate it. So thank you.
Ms. Patrica, did you have your hand up? Okay. Well, seeing none, thank you so very much, really appreciate it. Thank you, have a great day. Mr. Williams, thank you for joining us today.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for having me. Okay, so the next on the agenda is our, the workshop topics, and Ms. McClung is coming up to assist us. And on, what we have on here, as she's getting prepared, there are two topics that are on here. There is another one that I seen that was added on as well, unless I've just lost it.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Ms. Skittens.
Is there a question to, to add these to the workshop list, or these are ones that we're going to be working on now?
No, these are, these are the lists, and I see that you had something on here as well, and that one is on here, and we can see it right now.
But I can't.
What do you mean? I haven't seen anything from Ms. Morgan, so.
Yes, yours is, yours is on here too, Ms. Skittens. It's scheduled for permanent superintendent search.
See, I don't have the double screen. She doesn't either, I don't think.
Neither do I.
Nor does Ms.
Well, no. All I have is what's on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
The three of us don't have access to what you're loading.
And I will, and I will say what they are. There is, we'll go through this one at a time. So the, the first one was requested on 41221, and that's the 360 evaluations for board employees, and that is, was requested by Ms. Morgan. And Ms. Morgan, may I ask you to speak on this, please?
Yeah, we're, we're asked to evaluate our, our two employ, our three employees, actually, the internal auditor, the superintendent, and the board attorney. And I think it would be helpful to us as board members to have input from their peers and their employees as to their effectiveness, particularly with respect to leadership and management administration. So the whole point of a 360 evaluation is, well, since we're at the top, we evaluate, then the people on the side, and the people from underneath, and that makes it 360. So that's, that's the recommendation, that we look at that for board employees. I have suggested that in the past for all leadership people, but I know it's a very expensive process to go through. I think it would be a good exercise for us to initiate it as a board and practice it, see if it is a viable way of evaluating key professionals, and then, if, if appropriate, expand it beyond that point.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. First thing I'm going to ask is, has the 360 evaluation been implemented for school administrators? This is something that has been, since before I was on the board, when I was on CSI, Ms. McClung was, was there, not just myself, but others that were on that committee, were asking Dr. Pruitt about that, and I've heard now, as a board member, we've moved toward some, or we're doing a pilot, or we're doing this or that, but two things. I might consider a 360 evaluation for the superintendent if, first, we have it for our school administrators. Because with school administrators, you're talking about very, very intimate relation, maybe intimate's not the best word, but you know what I'm saying, very close relationships among the staff members, between the staff members, and let's say the principal of the school. It's X number of people. In terms of 360 evaluations for a superintendent, for instance, and I know we're talking about our other employees as well, those employees have no idea about relationships between board and superintendent. If we want to have a 360, I would say, "Hey, let's just go to an elected superintendent." We, as board members, have individual and, board as a whole, relationships with the superintendent. So A, I see that as a totally different aspect, because we work, you know, very closely, at least we should be, as a governance team. And to me, that's what we are evaluating as a governance team, and as we look at, let's say, the superintendent, as well as, is our board attorney representing us in the correct ways? Is, in this case, she interacting, providing us the kind of guidance that we need? Same thing with RSM. To me, it's a whole different ballgame, and I won't support this until I see that our district, our schools are, are having that same kind of 360 for, let's say, all the, all the principals, because that's, that's been on the table for at least six years. So that's, that's how I feel about it. I don't, you know, I mean, we can talk about it, I'll say the same, the same thing at a workshop, but I, I don't see, I think we should be talking about 360, if you want a workshop topic, for principals, not board employees.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so, and I wouldn't disagree. I mean, I've been talking about 360 evaluation since I got on the board. So, as I said, the problem has been that it is enormously costly, costly to do that, and frankly, I think that we need to model it before we ask people in the district to subject themselves to that. And, and maybe we don't need to. So that's, that's that comment. With respect to evaluating our employees, let me try to clarify a little bit. We are expected to evaluate how Ms. Bruno works with employees, staff in the district. We are asked to comment in our evaluation about how Dr. Atkins works with his cabinet, how he works with his staff. We are asked to make all kinds of judgments about the effectiveness of these people, not only in terms of their ability to work with us, but in terms of their ability to do their job. And that's really where I'm coming from. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
And I would agree that this, I don't want to have this conversation here, I just asked that we have it in a workshop, and it's fine if we make it 360 evaluation, period. That's okay.
Thank you. And, and that's exactly what this is today, is to see, is this something that we would like to have a conversation on later? So, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
I was going to try to bring us back to that, and so, yes, thumbs up on this as a workshop project, or workshop subject, my bad.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli?
I want to, she's.
Who's?
Ms. Vaughn has her hand up.
Oh, Ms. Vaughn?
Oh, I'll, I'll clarify if, I would be happy to see it as a workshop if it didn't say 360 for board employees, but it said 360.
Evaluation?
Evaluations. Because if we leave it this way, we are going to be focused on our workshop discussion, whereas personally, I feel it's a good topic. If it's been on the table since before 2015, I, I would say that we need to take abroad, then I'd be happy as.
Okay, so can we, can we agree on changing, or, and again, this is just a workshop topic, so we, that title doesn't, we can put the title to be whatever we want it to be, because it's, it's our workshop, it's what we want, want to see. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and I was just going to say that, yes, Mrs. Morgan has been talking about this since she got on the board, and, and if we're going to do that at a workshop, I would like it to be on 360 evaluations, period, of any, any personnel. I think we need to know the research on the effectiveness and the cost. I think it's not as much as it used to be because of technology, so I would like to see us be able to, to do that at a workshop, and thank you for suggesting that.
Ms. Giavennelli?
And I would actually agree with that. That was going to be my question, is it really that costly now with technology? So, thank you, yes, and I support that, and, and it be broad, as well.
Okay. Ms. Skittens? Ms. Skittens, are you there?
Yeah. My, my comment on it basically is that for any evaluation, I'm not sure that it's the best thing. For a coaching opportunity, yes. So, for example, prior to the six-month review, to be able to do even a simple survey with staff would allow us, or whomever uses the process, to talk with that employee and to say, "Here are some things that you can work on," or whatever, and then, in the final evaluation, they would have had an opportunity. I, I just, I'm not sure, my basic answer, yes, let's workshop it, because I'm not sure that that, the way we're looking at it is, is best for our needs. And then I have one other question when you're done with this that has to do with this workshop thing altogether.
Pertaining to this particular subject? Ms. Skittens?
It has to do with workshop. When you covered the other topic.
Okay.
And if you don't mind coming back to that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And so let's, can we get consensus on who would like to see this, have an appetite to see a workshop on this? And Ms. Skittens already said yes, correct? So we will find it. Thank you, Ms. Skittens. So we'll find a place in, in there, in the coming months to do this? And that would be 360 evaluations, period, correct? That's what we decided? Okay, perfect. So the second one on here is the process for board members' request for outgoing district communications.
Yes.
That was Ms. Morgan again, and it was requested on 426. Ms.?
Yeah, so, in my humble opinion, and speaking anecdotally, I am aware that board members continue to ask staff members to do things that other staff may not be aware of, and it's frankly created problems. And so I, the, the problem that I see is that staff doesn't have firm ground to stand on saying no to a board member who goes around the superintendent, or around a cabinet member, or around senior leadership. If we have a policy or a process whereby a board member wants something, that, that staff member has permission effectively to reach up their chain and say, "Do I have to do this, or should I do this because a board member has asked me directly?" Rather than acting on what the board member has, has told them to do. And that's really what this is about.
Ms. McClung?
Yes, Madam Chair, I know that a process is being developed, a draft process by the Communications Department around the specific matter, so that, so that it's very clear how to request that information be sent out district-wide. So if you want to put that in a workshop, that's fine. If you want them to brief you on a process, however you all would like to do that, but I know that is being developed.
Well, if it's in process, I, I don't need to have it on as a workshop item.
Thank you. Ms. Giavennelli?
And I would agree with that, and I need to, we need to add to this, because I've heard, and I actually spoke to the superintendent about this, I don't, I don't know who, who or what, but I, I was told at one point that board members were yelling at staff, and that is unacceptable. So I think that we need to really do get a handle on this, and, and so I, I look forward to seeing what the Communications Department comes back with, but that's, that's really vital, important to me, because I, we don't have that authority, and we need to be very careful, because, you know, staff should not be intimidated by any of us up here. So thank you.
Ms., Ms., Ms. Skittens?
Yes, you calling on me? Okay, all right. Well, actually, I'm very confused. I thought we already had the policy in place that when we ask staff to do something, that it's done through the superintendent, and I, I was just very confused about this. I don't know where it's coming from, and I, I would like some clarification, maybe they can send an email or something, or talk to the attorney, and let us know what this is about, because I'm very much in the dark.
We are supposed to go through the superintendent, however, they were producing a process in regards to communication, so that, like, if I decided I wanted to walk over there and say, "Hey, Jason, Emily, whomever, I want you to put this on for me, or I want you to send this out," that there is a process that, maybe I think it's the best thing since sliced bread, but perhaps it's, it's just not, you know, doable, or it should not be there. So that's what the process, from my understanding, is, is going to be, so that way we are all on the same page, we all have the same understanding of what, what we can and cannot do. That's as far as I, as I know.
And I still think that if we follow the process and ask the superintendent, the superintendent is the spokesperson for saying whether or not staff can do this or not.
But however, when a board member walks up to an employee or staff and they ask them to do something, they do not, or would not ever say no. So I think that to eliminate them, like even Ms. Giavennelli was saying about, you know, people getting scolded, or however you want to look at that, I think we need to make sure that, that we just have the right thing in, that we're doing in, in the right manner. And I'll have somebody elaborate that.
And the last thing I'd like to say on it is, if someone could even offline let me know what they're talking about, because maybe one of us asked somebody something and not realizing it was causing this issue. I don't know. So, and it could be. So, and it could be as easy as, well, no, that's all under that, and you shouldn't do it. I just don't think we need to make such a big deal of it at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn, please.
What I was going to say is, it sounds like this particular incident, let's say, or incident, one of several incidents, is solved with what Ms. McClung said about Communications Department, but it's, it seems to me that, and it is, I've heard the word "policy" used, it's a protocol, is it not? There's no.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, exactly. That maybe, not as a policy, I don't want to say it as a policy, but somehow, we might need to continue to reiterate this. I know that once, when I was first on the board, there was, can't even remember what it was about, and I asked somebody a question by email, like, I don't know, maybe one of the chiefs, or, and the person said something about going back through the proper line, or, you know, and, as I said, it was a lot, it was when I was first on, on the board. And, I mean, it's been something that I follow religiously on this, but I know that some people on the board have, maybe through whatever reason, either knowing the person outside of the district, or longevity on the board, or for whatever reason, feel comfortable, as a matter of fact, just going to other employees for, you know, and it's, it's not a big deal to me if it's just something fairly inconsequential, but to really put forth their opinion, and, you know, what they think the department should be done, or should be doing, rather, and, you know, I, I don't know, I guess, you know, you have, you have a protocol, and there's probably no way to put more teeth to the protocol. I don't think it's appropriate as a policy, but I've seen and heard of this being done by multiple board members, that they have an issue, and they just go right to the person, and tell them what they think, and that causes issues. It causes some of the issues that we have had as a board, and we've talked about this before, but it causes issues with how we respond as a board, and the whole idea that some people seem to be more privy to certain information than others of us on the board. And it doesn't matter if, you know, we've just had an election, and the person's been on the board three days, or the person's been on the board for 25 years, they're, each of us is the same, and nobody on the board should have the, not privilege, I can't think of a great word for it, but nobody on the board should take that opportunity, because they've been on the board for a long time, and they feel entitled, or the door's been opened for them. And, you know, maybe staff should also, and I know it, put staff in a, a position, an awkward position, but to say, that sounds great, Ms. Vaughn, let me check with Dr. Atkins to see if, or something, something like that.
Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry, excuse me, I just wanted to get, this, this particular one is just pertaining to outgoing district communication?
I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, since we talked about this, that maybe a slight change in what's here, that maybe it's not just outgoing district communications, that a board member has, I'm just looking at the words, process for board member requests. And so, that's where I'm focusing on, and I know that is often done outside of the protocol. And so, I'm wondering if that, maybe I've already just discussed it.
So, Ms., Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, basically, I would like a little bit of clarification, because is that what it is, asking communications to send out information? I mean, we do have a protocol that says, we run it, we give it to the superintendent, and he says yea or nay, and either passes it on to the department, or says, yeah, you can go ahead and talk to so-and-so. I mean, that's, that's been my experience. So, is there any way we can have any clarification, like?
No, I'm not going to name names, and I'm not going to give examples. I'm just saying.
I don't mean names, I mean, just like an example of what it is, like what kind of a request it might be.
I think it's pretty clear. Board member asks staff to do something, and staff feels obligated to do what's been asked, or to facilitate what's been asked.
Okay, but that does, that's not outgoing district communications.
Well, in, in this particular case, it was something having to do with communications, but I can also understand broadening the topic, as has been suggested.
I'm going to get, Ms. McClung.
Right, then I guess we need a workshop.
Ms. McClung?
Yes, and this might be a topic that could be discussed during the board's self-evaluation, which is scheduled for May 24th, because it is protocol, so perhaps that would be the appropriate time to discuss that.
Thank you. Does everybody think that's a good idea? I think it is.
Yes, it sounds good.
Ms. Javonelli?
No, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you know, we've had several complaints. One was a board member yelling at our, and a board attorney. So, I mean, we really have to, we have to, I think we really do need to visit this. So, it's obvious. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms., Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I'm listening. I think it can be, yes, it can be a part of the board self-evaluation, because I think it does have to do with us governing ourselves.
Ms. McClung, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the other one that's on here, and that I'm seeing, it is, was from Ms. Gittens on May 7th, and it says, schedule, schedule for permanent superintendent search. So, Ms. Gittens, is that what you were going to speak on?
Well, yes, I have been saying since the superintendent announced his retirement, that we need to move forward on that portion of the selection process, to get that going, along with whatever interim, all of that, but we need to get that process started. And I did send out, I think I've sent a couple of different emails. I know that you're supposed to be scheduling something, but I just really think we need to get it much sooner than later. It needs to be immediate.
We have, we are collecting different information regarding the firms, so the office is collecting it now, and they will be sending those out to everybody. And so, there's other stuff that we have, that we can be speaking on, on the 14th as well.
Well, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I've had community members contact me and ask why, in this selection of the interim consultant, and the permanent superintendent consultant, that we did not put out in RFQ, that we did not ask if there was, if there were anyone else that might have been interested in doing, that we weren't aware of, and that it was a very narrow selection, for example, on our consultant for the interim. And I don't agree with the fact of us just giving, you know, our suggestions of people we might know that could do a good job. I believe we need to put it out there, because we have no idea who else in the community that we don't know of.
Did you want to say something, Ms. Javonelli?
I'm going to actually, I've had tons of calls regarding that, you know, we had, you know, if that was, if it was advertised, and so forth, in the last three days. So, I have to agree with Mrs. Gittens, so I don't know if the same people are calling her and calling me, but, so I think we just have to be really careful. I don't, you know, with this, the process right now, and, and, because it's critical. So, and I had to say no, you know, the names were thrown out there, and, and one person emailed in, and so, I think that, you know, we, we didn't advertise for it, so we know that, right? So.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Patrico?
We are discussing a vote, an official action vote of the board. The board has decided to do this and go forward. We also discussed the process at workshops, and if there was a desire by the board to advertise that, that should have been discussed then. But as a board, we have decided to move forward with this process. So I think criticizing the process that we went through is counterproductive, in terms of moving forward. I would also suggest that I believe that Superintendent Dr. Atkins has a limit up to which he can hire for professional contracts, and I, I think that was the, without having to advertise, and that was my sense on this, $2,500 is not typically something we would advertise for. So, I'm not clear on how this subject has anything to do with scheduling a permanent superintendent search, and I'd like us to get back to the subject at hand, please.
Thank you.
May I please respond to that, Madam Chair?
Please, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, this is a good example of when I said we need to include community and stakeholder input. When it was decided how we would do this, that was not included. We really did not ask anyone, we just did it. And also, I would like to state to Ms. Patrico, in one of our meetings, I think it was the last one, or whichever, I recall you asking Ms. Bruno, Attorney Bruno, that if we wanted to change our mind about a vote, that we could possibly do that. And she responded, yes. So, my point in bringing this up is that, yes, there was a hard vote, which can, according to your attorney, be changed, now that we have further information, input from the community, and concerns regarding our equity in selecting someone to work for the district. So this is not off-topic, and it is not unnecessary, it is in light of additional information being received.
Okay, Ms. Javonelli?
And I would agree, you know, we, we need to learn to listen, and not bark orders to the community, that we need to listen to our community, and I think that this is vital in the process. And so, yeah, y'all wanted a process, so here it is. We need to work through it, and we need to listen to the community. Three people, we didn't vet either, any three of these people. We spoke to them over the phone briefly, with 30, for 30 minutes, if, if that. So I think that we need to be very careful in this process. And it's, you know, it's all about perception and transparency in this process. And you, you wanted it, so here it is. Maybe you don't like how it looks now, but we need to listen to the community.
May I, Board Attorney, to advise, if, if the board seeks to change its mind on an action vote? Attorney DePree Bruno, what actions could these two board members take, please? And, and how does that allow us to move forward with this process in any way, shape, or form, if we continue to go back and question our own decisions? That's not a legal question, that was probably a little bit of frustration speaking, I apologize.
So, in order to go back on an action vote, you need to bring it up during an action meeting, and depending on what it is, there may be some discussions in terms of whether or not you can even do that, because it does require different levels of majority, depending on what it is, and some of them, you just can't go back and change, so it really does depend. And then the other issue, I would say, is that per Robert's Rules, once you have made a decision in an action vote, you really are supposed to stick to the decision that you have made. That's the purpose of having the motion and the discussion. So, that's, that's the whole purpose of Robert's Rule, is the, the rule of the majority, and preserving the rights of the minority, so that everyone has an opportunity to discuss it, vet it, vote, and then you stick by what the vote is that the body has decided.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I'm speaking.
I'm sorry.
Just a minute, please.
Ms. Gittens?
Ms. Gittens?
Ms. Gittens? I'm sorry, but Ms. Morgan has the floor?
Yes, thank you. I think we're confusing two things. With respect to the profession, the permanent superintendent's search, we are looking for someone to help us find potential candidates, to do a lot of the work in the process. That's not what we're talking about for the interim superintendent. We're talking about a facilitator to help us do our work. They're not doing any work independent of us. And I, I don't think we need to confuse, the public should understand that, when it comes to the permanent superintendent's search, there is a role for them to play in the entire process. But with respect to this, we're just asking for somebody to facilitate our conversation about what we are doing.
Correct, thank you.
I think they're two very different things.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I will go back and tell you, and send you the date and time, that the question was asked, if we could change our vote on something if we needed to. And legal counsel said yes. And another time, we discussed rescinding a vote, and there is, rescinding a vote is an option in Robert's Rules, but I will look it up, and I will bring it up during an action meeting, so you can move on. I will bring it up in an action meeting.
Ask again, back to the topic at hand, scheduling, do we want to set up time to schedule for a permanent superintendent's search, which, of course, we are going to be doing that, so could I please?
So, is this my suggestion?
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
And you said that you will add it to the agenda on the 14th? I would like to see that as soon as possible on the agenda, and then I will rescind the request for this.
Okay, thank you. So she's rescinding, she's rescinding this.
And can I make my other comments generically about this?
Because that's what we're on right now.
Well, no, what I was asking, what I was asking is, on the whole idea of the workshops, when I look on the, the documents that we have to look at, as items are done, they are deleted, so there is not a full list of everything, every topic that we have covered. And I guess as it's done, they're deleting them, and I would like to request to please leave the list intact, because in future, someone may say, well, we need to talk about this, and they can refer back to the list and say, oh, but we already did.
Ms. Gittens, I'm going to have Ms. McClung speak on this, because they're not being deleted, but I'm going to have her speak, I'm going to have her speak on this, please.
Thank you. When you looked at that, you, those, we had some rows that were hidden, to make it easier to see the ones that we needed to come to consensus on. So just now, I unhid them, just by clicking the little arrow. You can see that the ones that are grayed out are the ones that have already had a workshop, or have had a briefing. The ones that are in black are the ones that are still upcoming.
But I, I can't see that, because I'm on the phone, but I will, I will check with you later on to see it.
If you have trouble, just give me a call.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the Google Sheet. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other topics that anybody would like to add? Ms. DePree Bruno?
Yes, I just want to clarify something. Robert's Rules does talk about rescinding, however, there are different things that can happen, depending on the circumstances. For example, with regards to the consultant, you guys have already voted to hire a consultant, have discussed the term of the agreement, have, or have instructed me to reach out to him, which I've already done, and will be discussing with. him, which I've already done, and will be discussing with him again, so that, that's a little bit, that's not an easy rescind, if at all possible to rescind. So, the, this is why I'm saying that it just depends on the circumstances. If you have already painted the house yellow, because you voted to paint the house yellow, and now you've decided that you changed your mind, you want to paint the house green, sometimes it's too late to be able to go back. So, and, and I think arguably, a property interest could also have been created because he's, he has an expectation now that he's going to be hired. So I think the board has to be very, very careful, because you've already taken a formal action vote. He's, he's watched it, he watched that particular workshop or that action meeting, because I have spoken to him about it, he's aware of it, we've entered contract negotiations, so the board has to be very, very careful, because you may be exposing yourself to liability.
Thank you.
Okay, may I please respond to that, Madam Chair? I was not suggesting that we rescind an offer. If you recall, the topic on there was about the permanent superintendent's search. I do believe that we made an error in not putting out a complete request to anyone that wanted to apply. I did not say, again, my words are being twisted, I did not say we needed to go back and rescind what we did in that offer. I was talking about the future for the other, for the permanent superintendent's search. So, no, that was not my statement.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, and the permanent superintendent will be done in a different manner altogether. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I just wanted to comment on a few things about scheduled permanent superintendent search. I actually brought that up for good of the order, and it kind of got floated away somewhere, but I, hopefully, we have that on our Friday agenda, and also, Ms. Morgan had sent out some ideas. May I ask Ms. Morgan about that, please?
Yes.
Please, okay. Ms. Morgan, you actually, when you sent that to us, I'm assuming you had that in mind, that we needed to move ahead and have some kind of a, a work plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was simply throwing out rough ideas?
Right, right, right. So, what, what I'd like to say is, in commenting about what we're adding and prioritizing, I, I think I agree with Ms. Gittens that this needs to be put out there, and if it can be put on the 14th agenda, and, you know, what Mrs. Morgan sent out, I saw a lot of things on there that I would say, yeah, that sounds good, and a few things like, mm, and it sounds, it's, it's a good starting point, because frankly, if we don't have anything, it, it will be there for seven hours at least. Just, so I, I think as a, as a starting point, and perhaps all of us, Chair Jordan, maybe you can put something out on which things we should, you know, our calendar, it's going to take some, some real paying attention to board calendars, and I heard you say that there are already some, a list is being formed of possible search firms and other entities that, that do that, correct? And, yeah, I, I feel like we, we can sometimes walk the gum and juggle the plates and whatever else we're doing here. I, I think we're, we're capable of doing that, so I'm endorsing putting permanent search on Friday's agenda along with what Ms. Morgan sent out as a starting point, and put it up for discussion.
Nope. I think that's good, because we do have to have, Jen does need to have the agenda so she can put that out, so this will be perfect. Ms. Patrica?
And may I ask that?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Gittens?
I fear to be acting too.
Ms. Gittens, I promise you, I'm not going to forget you, but I'm going to call on, there's other people that have their hands up down here, but I will definitely make sure that I do not forget you. Ms. Patrica?
I just, I agree, all we need to do is decide to add this to Friday and then move on. The other thing I would like to say is that I appreciate the way you've been creating the agendas for us to deal with it, each issue as a board in digestible chunks to allow us to move forward. I don't think you've gotten enough credit for whatever member of staff or the board attorney you've been working with to do that, and I really appreciate what you've done up to this point in that regard, so.
Thank you.
Friday, let's just get her done and move on.
We will. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, ma'am.
You got a comment?
Well, it was just based on what the conversation Ms. Vaughn brought up.
Uh huh.
And I was just saying, I had sent a couple of emails with suggestions as well about the process that was never even looked at or responded to, so I'm just asking if that could be included as well. That's all, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, are there any other comments regarding the workshops? Okay, if we could take just a, a real quick five-minute break, and then come back and we'll do the agenda review? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Good afternoon, Board, can you hear me? Yes. Good afternoon, yes.
All right. Good afternoon, Board, and Dr. Atkins. Equal Opportunity Schools, what it is, is it's a, it's an, actually an exciting thing for us, and I, I think that it's an organization that approached us, that is willing to work with us to improve our rigorous courses for our students of color or students that have a low socioeconomic background, that would be the focus, but it also is available for every student in the district. And how it works is, they partner with us, and they, they survey the students, and they find out the areas that the students are strong in, that they are, that they may need some help in, and their areas of interest. And then also, at the same time, they will survey our district staff and our school staff, and find out the way that we think when it comes to placing kids in rigorous courses. And then they work with us, and they train us on how to identify the kids and what we can do to put them in courses where they are going to, where they're going to get a rigorous education. That would be IB, ACE, or AP. And what we, when we first approached them, or we first started talking to them, we realized that, you know, last year, we had the highest college and career that we've ever had, and that was because of ACE General Paper, we expanded that. So we did not want that to be part of this, this process, because ACE General Paper, we did in-house, we expanded it, but we wanted to, we wanted to find other courses that would be interesting to our students and be able to put them in there. So this marries that process all together, and then we have a specific program or a specific outline for every student moving forward, where we can then put them in a rigorous course. And their success rate, they are currently in, they worked with Pasco County, was the largest one that they have in the state of Florida, and they had 185% increase in those targeted students passing an AP or, it's AP or IB, is what they took. Now, we understand that we're expanding our ACE program tremendously in this district, so they have actually said that they are going to partner with us and research all of the ACE courses, and then we are going to be able to utilize them for our students. So, but 185% increase is pretty impressive, and we want to broaden the opportunities for all of our students, and also make sure we're paying attention to the ones that traditionally were overlooked for these advanced courses. So that's, that's where we are with this.
Ms. Morgan, a special question?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. 185% increase, it matters in terms of what the base number is.
Correct.
So...
Anything looks good on her because she's tall and thin.
Okay, thank you very much. We are back at our workshop. The time is 3:02. And we are moving on to our agenda review of May 11th, 2021 for the regular agenda meeting. And Dr. Atkins, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The first question that I have is, comes from consent, academic service approval, the collaboration agreement with equal opportunity schools. And the question is, please explain equal opportunity schools. What value does EOS provide to our high schools? How do they collaborate? With whom? And what is the evident success from prior years? So Mr. Simmons is going to answer that question for us.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Can you hear me?
Good afternoon. Yes.
All right. Good afternoon, Board and Dr. Atkins. Equal opportunity schools. What it is, is it's a, it's an actually an exciting thing for us. And I think that it's an organization that approached us that is willing to work with us to improve our rigorous courses for our students of color or students that have a low socioeconomic background. That would be the focus. But it also is available for every student in the district. And how it works is they partner with us and they survey the students. And they find out the areas that the students are strong in, that they are, that they may need some help in, and their areas of interest. And then also at the same time, they will survey our district staff and our school staff and find out the way that we think when it comes to placing kids in rigorous courses. And then they work with us and they train us on how to identify the kids and what we can do to put them in courses where they are going to, where they're going to get a rigorous education. That would be IB, ACE, or AP. And what we, when we first approached them or we first started talking to them, we realized that, you know, last year we had the highest college and career that we've ever had. And that was because of ACE general paper. We expanded that. So we did not want that to be part of this process. Because ACE general paper, we did in-house, we expanded it. But we wanted to, we wanted to find other courses that would be interesting to our students and be able to put them in there. So this marries that process all together. And then we have a specific program or a specific outline for every student moving forward, where we can then put them in a rigorous course. And their success rate, they are currently in, they worked with Pasco County, was the largest one that they have in the state of Florida. And they had 185% increase in those targeted students passing an AP or, it's AP or IB is what they took. Now, we understand that we're expanding our ACE program tremendously in this district. So they have actually said that they are going to partner with us and research all of the ACE courses. And then we are going to be able to utilize them for our students. So that 185% increase is pretty impressive. And we want to broaden the opportunities for all of our students and also make sure we're paying attention to the ones that traditionally were overlooked for these advanced courses. So that's, that's where we are with this.
Ms. Morgan, question?
Thank you. 185% increase. It matters in terms of what the base number is.
Correct.
So.
So, yeah, I can share this data with all of you if you can, you can actually see where it was. And what it did is it took the base, base number and they tracked it for four years. And where the four years were, and this was the targeted group. These were the students of, the students of color or low socioeconomic was that group. And what they found with the students that they targeted that specific group, it was 185, sorry, I'm wrong. I can't see with my glasses. It's 181%. Sorry, I was off by two. 181% increase of those students participating and passing an AP or ACE exam. Whereas, but where, it also works for all of our students, all of the students in the program as well. Some of them, depending on the group, were up as high as 368% increase depending on the demographic. So that's, that's the biggest county that they worked with in the state of Florida. And that's, that's why we decided, when we met with them, we initially had them propose it to us in academic services. And it was really, you know, it was an aha moment. We're like, wow, these are students that we could really be hitting. And then they presented to the principals just the information. And the principals were fascinated with it and wanted to dive right into it and get going to track those students.
May I ask one follow-up question?
Please.
So we're using Title I money for this?
No, ma'am. Actually, it's Title IV.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're using Title, okay, we're using money that we already have.
It's Title IV money, yes, ma'am.
Yes. So we're diverting it from something else. We're diverting money from something else to put into this. So my question would be, what is that?
I don't know the answer to that question. I just know where the funds are coming from. But we can get that for you, though.
The reason being, I mean, I understand what you're trying to accomplish. And it sounds like it's something great. But on the other hand, we're making a decision not to do something in order to do this. And I'm just curious about what it is that we're no longer going to be doing.
I'll be more than happy to find that out where you, if we're diverting anything or if this is additional funds or where it's coming from.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think, not I think, definitely, I would have won it before voting on this like tomorrow night for, what is it, two, was it 255?
Yes, ma'am. It's 255.
A quarter of a million dollars. I would have liked to have seen the data actually presented to us more than just reading out loud. Because there's, a company has lots of ways to spend data. And I'm going to bring up two things that I have brought up over and over again. Because this is an area of my expertise, having taught AP for, I don't even know how many years, 20-plus years. First of all, here we are willing to pay for this collaboration when in the past, and I've asked Dr. Spiro about this twice when I was liaison to the curriculum committee, we have not committed funds to, to ensure a requirement that every single one of our high school teachers who is teaching an advanced class takes at least a semester, or not a semester, I'm sorry, a week-long program. I know when I was at Estero High School, there were people who were teaching AP that were just, oh, yeah, you're good. I'll put you in AP. It doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. For ACE, I've taught both ACE and AP. I know the programs, especially AP, very well. So that's one thing. Because it's one more example of us, let's just bring people in instead of looking at the expertise and the potential expertise of our teachers. Secondly, I've asked about this from way back, probably before I was even on the board. Where, okay, when I toured Lexington Middle School, Lexington Middle School is an ACE school. And all of their kids use, all of their kids are educated with, using the particular, I'm trying to think of the right word, but the particular ways of higher level thinking that one would get in any ACE class, all different levels. We don't have that opportunity in all of our middle schools, something like that. I think, I remember in the back of my mind that Collier County is using the, the ways that ACE, and I do have a point with this. This program goes in and looks at our high school students. Don't you think, or did you consider that where this really needs to start is in the middle school? Because if we want those children of color, lower income to do well, we can't just say, and we will find some that are just smart kids that for whatever reason didn't select the higher level advanced courses. But I'm wondering why we haven't considered putting these kinds of, that, this kind of structure in all of our middle schools. So that when we do, A, it's, it's, let's identify them in middle school. B, when they get to high school, even if they haven't been identified in, in middle school, B, they're going to be more prepared to do what, what you say. I just don't understand this, although I have, I have said forever, I mean, I, at Estero, I looked out of my AP class with all the blue-eyed blondes in my class, in AP. And then in my reading class, all the Hispanic and black kids and lower income kids. So this is an area of expertise. I know, I know what I'm saying. And I'm not saying you didn't do research on this. But.
We don't.
Dr. Spiro, do you have answers?
Yeah, a couple of things. You have great questions you have. First off, we do have a training plan for AP, IB, and ACE for all of our teachers. That's happening this summer. I'll have that for you soon. I heard you. You had to give me a little chance to work on it. And so that, that has developed. And we will have that for you. I'll be able to get that to you in the weekly board update. Secondly, we do have ACE coming to all of our middle schools. They are going to have an opportunity to have at least one experience through a course of ACE so that students can see what that, that rigor feels like. And we're doing that across the board. That is coming also. Thirdly, we agree with you. Like, we, we want diversity in the most rigorous courses we have because we want to open up doors for our students. The equal opportunity schools is another piece of that umbrella that helps to identify students who maybe had never been identified before as, here's an opportunity for you to experience this course. So he or she can then take this, this course in that school, whether it's AP, IB, or ACE as well. So it's just a piece of opening up doors for students.
I, I'm going to respond yea. Because in my experience, if we weren't initiating what you just said, giving opportunities in our middle schools and training our teachers, and that's not a put-down on teachers, any teacher, no matter how excellent skilled that teacher is, when they go into AB, ACE, or IB, it's a whole new ballgame. And there are different ways that they're going to have to teach different things that they have to emphasize. So I'm happy to see this as, as another piece. And I'm glad that finally, I hate to say it that way, but you know, you and I have talked about that when I was on curriculum council. How, how long is the training going to be for those teachers? Will they be doing training here in the district? Or, I know when I trained for AP initially many, many years ago, it was college board training. Or is it a train the trainers situation?
It'll be a mixture of both. And I'll have that spelled out for you so you can, for everybody, all the board members, for all the board members to see how that training is going to take place. But I hope it's a particular of interest for you. And that way you can see across the board. And I don't have it memorized.
It is within the district. It's not offered by Cambridge or by?
I would have to be able to look at that. Because I know it's, it's a variety of different offerings. Some will be district, some will also be through the AP or ACE as well. So it all depends on the access we have to those trainers also.
Yeah, I'd be, since it's been an ongoing interest for X number of years, I'd be interested, it actually, it goes way back to when I was still teaching and was quite shocked to find out the lack of knowledge for college board resources from the teachers. So I'm, I'm still thinking I would have preferred to see the specifics on this EOS with the data spelled out. Because that was the first thing I thought of when Mrs. Morgan said, well, you know, the base data and all of that. We all know, we can spend data and companies will do that to put their best foot forward.
We could send you the data right, right when we're done here. And that we could at least see it this evening. And if you have a question about it, then feel free to reach out through Dr. Atkins. And we'll be happy to make sure we answer all of that for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. Don't go away, Dr. Spiro. Okay, so I just have a couple of questions in addition to Mrs. Morgan's question about what are we not doing if we're doing this? I want to make sure I understood correctly that we had 151% increase in participation and passing AP and IB?
Please come back, sir.
Mr. Simmons.
It was 181%.
181.
181. But I'll send this to you, the same thing that I have, so you guys can see it.
Then I just have a couple of tag-along questions if you're going to be sending us some information. So I wanted to know, currently, what is the criteria for participating in AP, IB, and ACE? You know, like, is, is there academic criteria or, like, it's like when you do dual enrollment, you have to pass, pass the college placement test. So along with that question is, the next question is, and what is currently the success rate for AP, IB, and ACE? And I just, I thought that that information would be helpful to us in determining our vote tomorrow night.
Yeah, no problem. I can get you that data. That, that's a little more than solid. So some schools will allow students to participate in an advanced program singular, as in one course at a time. And some of them require them to go in full. So, but I'll get you the data on the academic requirements. And that's part of what we're trying to do with EOS, is that we can find students in their interest and what they may have a talent in. And we can put them into that, into an advanced curriculum based on that.
Okay.
And not just based on a score or their GPA.
Right.
So you may have a student that is really solid in this area, and we can put them in a rigorous course.
Okay. Good. That's.
And then I'll get you the success rate too. Would you like the pass rate for AP or AP, ACE and IB?
Yeah. I mean, and I tend to think, just from past experience, and it's been a long time since I've been in a high school. But I, you know, I think that those might be better at IB and ACE than they are at AP. And, and that was why I was wondering about the criteria. And then currently, what is the success rate?
Okay.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli?
So I just have a question. Is there like a syllabus or an outline of what the training that they're going to receive this summer? I would be, I would be curious to read it because I think that would help me. Because I'm not on the educational side. So I kind of need to touch it, feel it, see it, read it kind of thing for me to understand it.
We'll get you both. We'll get the syllabus for what these trainings are. Absolutely.
That would be awesome.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. And something else that just popped into my head. I think, I think it's great that we can get some of the, the students into these. For instance, a native Spanish speaker often goes into an AB Spanish class and is not in. And that's great. I'm not, that's great. But when I asked, and this has been a while back, maybe a couple of years ago, for the pass rate for our minorities, what I got was people who had passed one or more. Now, to me, that's not really bringing up those kids. I'd be also interested in who is graduating with the ACE diploma, the IB, and it's called, what now? They didn't have the corners?
AP capstone?
Capstone, capstone diplomas. I would be interested in that data. Because I think you're going to see a lot different data on the socioeconomic and the racial, ethnic. When you look at who graduated with those diplomas, do we have that information versus who passed one or more? Tells a whole different tale. And we need to do something about this. And I'm glad to see more. Because we don't serve our top kids the way we, the way we should, in my opinion. Because I want to see our kids going to Ivy Leagues and the top schools in the nation. And I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing that.
Completely agree with you. And that, that was one of the big, we have expanded ACE in this district to, we're going to be one of the biggest districts in, in the world when it comes to ACE, to be honest, when we get done with this expansion. So, and the reason why is exactly what you said. It is important for every, every student, no matter what school they go to, to have the same rigorous opportunities that they would at any other school. So that, that ACE for all of our schools is exactly that. It's that we realize that we need to have those exact opportunities for all of our kids. So absolutely agree with that.
Yeah. So if you can get me the information on that, I would feel more comfortable seeing more information coming back before I approve equal opportunity schools.
Thank you. Ms. Skittens, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. I'm in the car, so I hope it's not too noisy.
You're, you're fine.
Um, okay. So my question is, I have sent a request to get data because I would like to see the demographic data as well. But I've spoken to parents and teachers and some administrators about it. And I would have liked to have seen that we could pull data together and see what the students are and be able to do the same thing on our own. But I don't know that that would happen without the assistance. And even though, I mean, I hate to spend the 255,000, I think if it's going to get us across that finish line, and I believe, is that for just one year? Or is that the duration of the program or what?
That's, that's per year.
Okay. So I would like to see that when we review this in a year, that we could be able to have things in place to do the data and following the students and all on our own, rather than to have to have someone else come in and do it for us. And I believe we have enough, you know, at coaches and that type of thing that we should be able to do that. But I'm going to support it because I believe it needs to be done sooner than later.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Skittens. Are there any other questions? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to be clear. I will support it. I appreciate the information I got this afternoon. But I also think it's helpful for us to know what kinds of decisions you're making when, when we're going into new programs with an existing budget. But I think, it sounds great.
Thank you. And I appreciate all your questions because I definitely had, this was on my list too. So thank you for all your insight. And Ms. Vaughn, I always appreciate you speaking on behalf of the teaching experience. So thank you on that. Ms. Vaughn?
Do we still do the Duke Talent Search in what, what is that, seventh grade?
Yes.
Okay. And are we utilizing that? Do all kids get tested for Duke Talent Search? Or is it only the kids that are identified as top? Or is it only the kids that are identified as top students?
That, excuse me, that, I'll get that information for you for this past year because it may have been different because of the pandemic.
To screen if all our kids had to take, I think it's what PSAT or SAT for the Duke Talent, I guess SAT for Duke Talent Search. And that would be a great way to screen them. And I think some of the teachers would be surprised at a few of the kids that pop up as being really, really gifted and haven't been identified. So.
All of that is, all of that is really what we're trying to do, is trying to identify students who have not had that opportunity before. So that's why I keep saying it's really an umbrella approach to continue to provide multiple opportunities for our kiddos.
Yeah, no, I totally, I totally agree. But I'm just hoping we're utilizing all, including, hopefully the Duke Talent Search can be done with all our seventh graders.
And I'll send that to you as well this week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good point, good point. Thank you. Dr. Atkins?
All right, next one, G7 approval to proceed to due process hearing. Question is, what is the?
Dr. Atkins?
And that would be, Ms. Chivinelli?
I've got, received all the answers. They emailed me that this morning, so I'm good. You don't have to go through all that. It's, since it's a due process hearing, it's kind of, you know, private anyway. So I'm, I'm good. I got my answers.
Thank you. And so I think that was for all of those, G7, eight and nine. And then I think Ms. Skittens also had G9 on her list. So Ms. Skittens, did you, did you hear what Ms. Chivinelli just stated?
Yes, I did. And I haven't had the opportunity to look at it, but I will. And thank you.
Okay. So, did you have questions regarding that?
Let's see, I'm sorry? Yeah, what are the answers?
So I'll make sure that everybody gets the answers, but very quickly, there's just two things. There's the due process cases, when we are the ones who are securing services for a student because a parent won't consent. That I believe was G8?
That was G8.
That was G8. And then the other ones with regards when an issue arises where there's a difference in opinion as to what services are supposed to be provided, and that will be the defense cost. You will not see the defense cost come before the board again because traditionally that has not been coming before the board. That's something that's usually part of our defense cost. But you will see when you have to act quote unquote as the plaintiff or the petitioner for the student because the parent won't consent. So those will continue to come before you.
That's what threw me off.
Right. And then these, and these have come before us, June of 2017, October of 2019, 2020. So this is something that does come through.
And I think it's important to note as well, because we're handling a lot of these matters in-house, you probably won't see them as much on the agenda. And then it's, I just wanted to let everybody know that G9 has been resolved as of today. So we work really hard, Teresa Bowen and her staff, and we work with the parents so that we do not have to go to due process hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead. Ms. Patrica?
While you're here, Ms. Bowen, you have a reputation for being absolutely phenomenal with parents and just to a fault, spending too much time on the phone with them. But you and I talked about this. There is no such thing as too much time when it can result in exactly what Attorney Schroed just said, which is a resolution that's acceptable to the family. So I just wanted to publicly recognize you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chivinelli?
So I was just going to ask that. Does that come off the agenda now? Because that's really, I was just kind of getting the procedural part of it. Because she had, that was part of the response is that she had hoped to settle it.
So G9 will come off, G9 will come off, but G7 and G8, they've already been noticed that will continue.
Okay, that was all I was concerned with.
Are there any other questions pertaining to this? Okay, Dr. Atkins?
Okay, next is operations question, approval to renew the ITN glass materials repair and installation. I believe Ms. Sedino is here to help with that response.
Ms. Chivinelli, the churs?
Yeah, and actually, this was just for community and they did such a great job last time. I really just kind of wanted to hear them do it again. I'm sorry, but it was impressive. The information was wonderful. So I enjoyed that. So, thank you.
So, Lizbi, want some lunch for them?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Barbara Sedino, and this is Jimmy Thompson. So we, we wanted to answer your question about the differences in the price of the glass. We actually brought some samples so you can kind of get a better understanding what that looks like. So the biggest difference that we're going to see is the price difference is going to be because of the type of glass that we're going to be using. So.
This is what we're currently using. And to protect our capital asset, this is what we're going to.
Wow.
So this is a big, big difference. So this particular glass that we have here is about an inch and 5/16ths in thickness. And the great thing about this is that it's actually hurricane impact glass. And the rating for it, based on Florida building codes for this region, means that the glass should be protecting at wind speeds of up to 170 miles an hour. So that's the greatest thing about that versus this little, you know, thinner piece of glass here, which is approximately a quarter of an inch. The other great thing about this glass is that it has what they call low emissivity rating. And basically what that means is that it will keep out about 66% of the solar heat that, from the sunlight, and about 70% of the light, natural light, will be emitted into that classroom. So that's the great thing. So what that does in a classroom, let's say, is that instead of having all the rows of lighting on, we can actually turn off a row. And then thus, that will also create an energy cost savings for, for the district.
May I ask, you're finishing? Can we show and tell that? Can you send that around so we can?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Please.
Yeah, that's really impressive, actually.
Ms. Chivinelli? And I actually have those kind of windows in my house now.
Oh.
They do keep the heat out. And it's really hard to break through. You can't really break into any place with these windows.
I don't know when you use a gravity, you're going to need to cut because it's kind of sharp.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Big difference.
Wow.
So it has a vapor barrier inside the glass filled with argon gas. So it doesn't fog, you know, on cold days. It's hot outside and cold inside. That argon gas prevents the buildup of moisture on the inside of it.
That considered like a double pane, double?
Yeah, yes.
Great, thank you.
What it is, is considered insulated impact window.
Thank you.
Yes. So it makes a huge difference in our classrooms. It's also great, you know, because as the district is moving forward with, you know, different projects, we're always trying to like, how can we better improve our energy efficiency? How can we better protect our building? How can we make, you know, keep classrooms safe? So this is one, one approach, you know, that helps protect our buildings. The other thing that this, with the existing glass that are, that is at these facilities, those glass, the single pane glass that's existing at those windows are about 40 plus years old. So they're due, way due for replacement. So they have completely reached their life expectancy. And, you know, this would also help prevent water intrusion into these buildings. So.
And is that correct? Like those windows, if it cracks the first layer of it, the middle and the second will protect the rest, right?
Yes, ma'am. The exterior portion has the tempered section. So if a missile does impact it, you're going to get the, you'll get the fracture effect. However, it won't go through because that tempered area is going to protect the secondary gas before it gets to the argon barrier.
That's good.
We've done two schools. The schools that have been done are Lehigh High.
Cape High. Cape High School was the last project that we did. And Lehigh Senior was the other one. And I believe we've, if I remember correctly, I think it was Cypress High was the third one that we did. So as we move forward, this is the type of glass that we will be using on those projects.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Patrica?
Not a question or comment. Thank you. Half penny sales tax. And Mr. Thompson, I don't know whether you remember way back, one of our very first ISOC meetings, you actually provided copy, not copies, photos of bad windows that had been replaced. That might be helpful for the board to see that as well.
Absolutely. I can't take credit for that. Barbara provided the pictures.
If you can share those, if it doesn't take you too long to find them, I think it, that visual really helped me to understand what you were doing. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Atkins?
All the questions that I have.
Okay. Wow. Okay. Let's go back to my agenda now. Okay, so we have, are there any other questions that were not listed on here for the agenda review that need to be asked and answered? No? Okay, CNN, we have the good of the order. So I'm just going to go around. Ms. Chivinelli?
I actually only have a couple of things. I attended my first graduation on the first at FSW, and that was wonderful. It was the first time I've done FSW. So that was, they had 97 students. Most of them graduated with an associate degree. So they're most, you know, all going on to higher ed, most of them. I, we had the JRTC program here recently, and that was really a very nice program. And what really amazed me was the one student, and this is something Ms. Vaughn mentioned just a little bit earlier, how our students are not getting the recognition. And, I mean, her GPA was a 5.5. That was pretty impressive. And that really radiated in my head, her GPA. So, and I thought about that when you mentioned that earlier. And then I went to kite day at Buckingham Exceptional Center, and that was actually a wonderful day there. A little warm, and it was very difficult flying the kite, I might add, in the morning time. Later in the day, the breeze picked up, so it was a little bit easier. But, so that was, and the kids were outside, you know, back and forth. That was actually really nice. But one of the things that came up, and this is actually for Dr. Atkins, and something for the board to think about, I was talking with some of the teachers, and they said it's difficult, they're like a late start date, and it's very difficult for the children because they start really early. And that they would request for them, someone to look at the bell times, their bell times, and maybe start a little bit earlier in the day. The kids are up early, but they don't get to the school until like 9:30 or something. I'm not sure exactly, but it's late in the day. And they felt that that affects their day for these students. And I don't, I don't know the data and the information behind that, but when you have more, it came up different, from different teachers and everything. So that, I was hoping that would be something that, since we're talking about new school year, if somebody could look into that and, you know, about the bell times there. Because they all had, it said it's really tough for their day because it's a very long day for them and their students. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that as we move forward with our code of conduct and the LGBTQ guide that we had included before, that we're working on, I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at the public input that we're receiving. I have had many, many, many written contacts through email from people in support of keeping the guide. So I just wanted to mention that and make sure that we are looking at the input of the entire public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Skittens? Ms. Skittens, are you there?
Yes, I'd like to take you out to speak there.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay.
I will give my comments tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Be safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, I wanted to real quickly follow up on my, my piece of the interim, excuse me, the interim superintendent search, I believe that I sent out to you that Suzette Rivera has, and she's worked so hard on that. I'm very thankful for her hard work on it. We sent her the final, final of the ad, and it's posted. And Lizette Roman talked with me during the break. And because we had talked about, well, how are we going to, as the resumes come in, how are we as board members going to receive those? And it was brought up here. I think Ms. Patrica brought up about a PDF document, and Ms. Chivinelli said that would be great because she's out of town, and who knows what'll come up for the rest of us. So this is how it's going to be delivered to us. Ms. Roman reached out to Dennis Osterhaus, and we will receive once all, once it closes on, what's the date? May 21st, okay, at 9:00. One email will be sent out, and it will have a secure link to access OneNote file. And Mr. Osterhaus sent this for people like me that aren't that great with all the different, different options that we have. He says, "OneNote is a digital notebook application that offers secure," and that's very important, "an organized sharing of notes and ideas. Pages can be easily created for each topic, and in this case, each applicant. It is easily shared and accessible to those in the district and also to outside consultants." And he recommended its, its use. And something else that is, besides the fact that it's only those of us who've been granted the access, something that Ms. Roman said to me during the break was, "It's great for them because this is the kind of platform that they can use as each resume and cover letter comes in. They can enter each one as it comes in." They would have, they would, it would be alphabetized, and she said there would be a tab for each applicant. So just, are there, yeah, Ms. Morgan, what, can I, can I just call on her if you mind?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry. We just, is this, we're going to be allowed to see the document or we're going to be allowed to comment on the document?
No, no, no. I'm just informing you that this was, because what we voted to have, what we voted to have was, rather than have them put together a paper binder, it was suggested, and we all agreed, that it would be better to have a digital format.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, but the way you were explaining OneNote, it sounds like we can put edits in there. And I'm just wondering if that is?
No, it's a PDF. There's no editing.
Okay, so what was all of that other stuff you were reading?
She's just sharing.
I'm just sharing this. I'm being transparent. I'm keeping you all informed.
It sounds like a potential violation of sunshine when you're talking about it, and that's why I asked.
Oh.
No.
No, it's just telling you the format that we're getting.
Okay, if it's just a PDF and, and none of us can, okay, fine. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Understood.
Yes. Go ahead, maybe Latonya?
Madam Chairman, I share some clarity. I think what Ms. Vaughn was explaining was our process of putting it in the system.
Correct.
Once it makes it to the board members, you will just view it.
Correct.
So you will not be able to edit it. But our process, we have to put it in.
Right, right. And I'm sorry if I didn't make that, that clear. Remember, they're all, okay. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on what we voted on. And this, this is just telling you what particular format it's going to be in and what particular, what would you call OneNote, a platform or a?
Yeah, it's going to be booklets for everybody.
Yeah, so.
Like we had spoke about.
And just, just sharing on it. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Is this good of the order or is this board comment?
Yeah, this is good of the order slash board.
I didn't bring my comments.
Comments?
Nothing for good of the order.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, all of you had a, a bag in your office?
Oh.
With a lunch bag? Okay, that was from Parent University. So Communications had made that and gave them to, to me to put in there for all of you. So everybody did receive that from them. And it was really, I was a few minutes late, first time in my life ever late for anything, and I thought I was 40 minutes early. But thanks to Dr. Atkins, he, he did my spill and he did his. And then I still came in, I was able to have a conversation. I was able to have a conversation or, or speak to the class. They were really excited, and their kids were really excited, the fact that their parents or guardians were thoughtful enough to participate, you know, and to learn what they needed to, to learn in order to help them. But the staff, they decorated the room really nice. I mean, it was, it was really beautiful for this first graduation. I thought it was amazing. And then also, I just wanted to say that Franklin Park, we held our first meeting with Franklin Park, which I thought was excellent. The staff did a great job, and the community came and shared history with the, with everybody there, those who have graduated from there, the alumnis of, of Franklin Park. And I was offering bricks. I'm like, if you come to me, we'll give you a brick, whether we start tearing it down. So we definitely want participation in, with the community and everything that we do, and so we do really appreciate that. And, and just as Ms. Vaughn was sharing, thank you for entrusting me and trying to, you know, do the work of the board, and I, I am here, you know, to serve all of you and to work alongside of you and, you know, try to get this process through. As I said, I'm, I'm one of seven, so collectively, we will make this happen and do what we need to do to get the interim in, and then to move forward in getting the, the next superintendent. So those would be my comments, and let's see, Ms. DePree Bruno?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Atkins?
Just two, two quick things. First of all, I think you've received some correspondence from Dr. Joe Wise, maybe Bob Serra, and, and Mark Graves about Acceleration Academy. When, when I learned about that late last week, I did call Dr. Spiro on Friday, and, because I was as, probably as surprised as they were, honestly, when I learned of it. So anyway, I've asked him to put together a meeting with the two legal teams, and so that's going to take place this Friday, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward with that. You know, I know Dr. Spiro and I, it was something that we wanted to see happen, but I, I do understand that, that our legal team had some concerns that were expressed, and that went to an email to, to them. And anyway, I think we'll, hopefully we'll be able to, to work it out, but that meeting is, is already scheduled for Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Ms. Patrica?
Dr. Atkins, I sent, forwarded that to your office and asked for clarification. Thank you for the clarification. I will tell you that this is not the first time that this specific vendor has pressured board members to get a contract with the district. I find it to be highly inappropriate for a vendor to pressure board members to do business with the district. And, and you and I have had that conversation privately. I, I viewed this email as being yet another example of inappropriate pressuring of board members to do business with the district, and I wanted to say that out loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jivinelli?
So actually, Dr. Atkins and I, I think we talked, you talked about this a couple months ago, so I was, I haven't even had a chance to really read this, but I don't feel like it's pressure at all. I think it's, it's a process that we've, over two years, that, you know, it's been talked about, and I think when you're talking, I mean, what's it, it's almost seventeen thousand students, this number here that's not had a graduation, has not been, have a diploma. I think this is vital that we look, move forward with this. So I don't, I was, I'm surprised that there's a reason. I would like to see actually the legal issues that involve, so if someone could include me into that, I would like that information, because I, for me to understand, I don't understand how it just got halted if there was a, there was contract negotiation, and I'm just briefly reading this. So I, I would be, I'm kind of concerned over how we got here today.
Well, you, like, you know about as much as I do about it right now, because I, I was out on Friday when I, when I learned, and, but Dr. Spiro is, has, I think, worked it to where we got our, our attorneys that will work with theirs and hopefully work something out on Friday.
Right. Ms. Fisher?
I just wanted to add to that. After meeting the vendor many times at FSBA events and talking with people from Miami, Sarasota, and St. Lucie, I think we, this is not something that we can afford for our students to overlook as an opportunity, so I hope that we will do, you know, do some exploration and get some information based on what the legal implications might be. And I have not considered that this vendor has ever pressured me over the years.
May I ask a question?
Uh, Ms. Gittens? Go ahead, please.
Yes, I totally agree with what Ms. Fisher and Ms. Jivinelli were saying. This is a vendor that has been at every FSBA event that I've attended, and I do believe we were all well aware of their services and have talked with them. And I, I find it a little bit disconcerting to say that they are pressuring when they've been talking and meeting to the point of negotiating a contract. That does not sound like pressuring anyone to me. So I really am interested to see what happens after negotiations just begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, please.
And I'm going to echo what my colleagues have just said. I know the, I've met the vendor, chatted with him, I've never been pressured. I think the program that I've heard about sounds wonderful. As a matter of fact, I was unaware that we were at that point in, in negotiation. I think it's a whole lot better to have, to have a partnership rather than, you know, that we, we need to serve these kids, and I never, ever felt pressured whatsoever. Now, I do know from anecdotally that one or two of the members on this dais have in the past said that we don't need the program in our school, so I'm, in our schools. So I'm just hoping that there wasn't a pressure another way that, anyway, I'm, I'm in support of the program, and I hope everything's worked out.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Okay, then.
Ms., Dr. Atkins?
If there are none, I'll go to my next and last item. I think last week I'd mentioned that, that we do feel at this time that because of the recommendation of the, of our commissioner regarding masks for next year, and then also our, the state surgeon general, that our, we have more flexibility with our particular board policy, so you're not in a position where you have to make a change, that I can make a recommendation. So I am going to be moving forward and making a recommendation regarding next year as it relates to voluntary masking, and that would be that we would go ahead and move forward with voluntary masking. The reason I'm making it at this time is because I do think it's important for families to be able to make decisions about next year now expeditiously. Our, our sister district to the south has already gone this direction as well. So I, and I also know that there's a lot of public interest around this issue, so at least people know at this point that that would be my recommendation at this point regarding how we're going to open up schools next year. Now, having said that, that leads some to the question about, well, what about the remainder of this year? You have to understand a couple things that I think is important. One, we have two memorandums of understanding with our association, both our association, they are very much in support of the, of maintaining our current trajectories relates to masks, and I know Dr. Pruitt has already been in communication with them, so, so they feel that their, at least some of their constituency feels very important for us to stay this course so that they can feel safe as employees in the classroom for the remainder of this year. The second reason, of course, we, I think we're on a pretty good, we have a pretty good track record right now as it relates to how things are going in our district, and we have high school graduations coming up and a lot of end-of-year activities, so we want to try to keep those as safe as possible. So for those two major reasons, you know, again, we're recommending that we, we stay the course at this time with current protocols, and I think that if you, you know, we continue to work with our partners, the Department of Health, that would be supportive, that are in support of that as well. So anyway, that, that memo is going to come out. I also, the final thing I'd like to say about that is, if we do see changes with the progress of where we are as it relates to the pandemic, you know, increase in positivity or different recommendations come to us from the Florida Department of Health, then any interim superintendent in this board would have, I think, the time to, to make a change prior to the beginning of, of next year, if that was something that, that, you know, that, you know, the interim superintendent or the board felt was necessary prior to the opening.
So can, so then, when you're saying to the end of the year, that's the June seventeenth? Is that what you're speaking of? Because I thought that the MOU was till the thirtieth, and then you have summer school. So are these kids going to start in summer school with them and then go without?
That's a good point, which we have, we have discussed with our association. We made the same point with them. Could we consider moving that to an earlier date so we could, we could look at summer school? They really felt strongly that it was important for us to stay with the consist, the manner of the, of the MOU, so that takes us to June thirtieth, so the change would be effective July one. So yes, we would be starting summer school under one set of rules and, and potentially moving to a, a different stance, but unfortunately, that could not be avoided. Dr. Pruitt did have those discussions in hopes that we could get there. But I, you know, I understand their concern. I mean, they hear a lot from their employees and constituency, and they're, they, they want to honor those concerns.
And, and I guess I'm just going to say one more thing. With the, because I know everybody, I keep getting all these emails that I personally am in charge of the masks, that I control that, and I just, I, I just want to make sure that people understand, I do not control that. But I also, you know, I understand, because heck, I don't want to wear, wear this any longer, I'm, I'm tired of it, as well as I know my grandkids are, but they're going to do what they have to do. But I don't think people understand what the MOU is and how that affects what we, as the district, has to do. I think that's, that's an issue.
And also, that was something else that come up, was the, the contract, the, the contract with the teachers' union and everything. I think that, can you touch on that a little bit? Because people don't understand that.
Don't understand that.
Yeah, so, so when you, when you have a contract with the teachers' union, you know, the, basically, the working conditions are part of that, it's bargained, okay? And this specific piece of, of language is something that Dr. Pruitt has worked with our bargaining units to develop a memorandum of understanding in terms of how we are going to, how we're going to react to working conditions during this pandemic. So we've come to literally an agreement with our bargaining unit that is, an agreement that this board has with our bargaining agreement that you cannot unilaterally just break. So you are, you are in this agreement with that unless you both decide to, to change that agreement. You know, you're, you have to honor that during the length of that memorandum of understanding, which is June thirtieth.
Are there any other questions? No? Thank you.
Okay, and I'd like, you will be receiving this, basically what I said, it'll be summed up in a memo that, that I'll be sending to you this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so you know, I'm sorry, Ms. Jivinelli?
Real quick, for Dr. Atkins, too, the SOS program, can, I think, are, are applications being done right now for, because I know it's kind of out there, and if we could just, for the, I don't know, just for the sake of the community, because it's such a great program. We didn't get to do it last summer, so if, if you could just touch on that, too, please.
Dr. Spiro, is there anything you want to say about that? I know that he's indicating to me that, that we do have, I know we have every intention of doing it this year. It will be face-to-face, and applications are currently out there, so we hope to run a full program.
Yep, that's a hundred percent accurate. So we are going to be running a full program, where our schools are encouraging students to apply. I'll send you some information as well. That way, when you're on the community, you could have that information and encourage others to do it as well, but we are...
Businesses as well.
Absolutely.
The deadline is, is May seventeenth.
Correct.
Is the deadline for that. And I know, I spoke about it.
Can I ask the location?
I'm sorry? Location is Dunbar, it's the Dunbar High School, the old Dunbar community.
Community, high school.
Yes.
So there's not one in the East Zone this summer?
No, they're, actually, this, and I'm sorry, I'm just...
Go ahead.
Okay, they're actually doing it, it's going to be in-person and virtual.
Oh.
So they have two components on that.
Well, that's awesome.
And then it is online, you can get it online, because I know, I've been sending it out to tons of kids, because I think this is an excellent program. But, so there's many ways for them to do that, and they have businesses that are working with them, and the kids will be getting stipend at the end. So it's a win-win all the way around.
Mm-hmm. And we, we need businesses, so I, that was the other point that I wanted to get out there.
And we need businesses.
Yeah, to be involved, yeah.
Yes. Thank you for your input on that, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jivinelli, do you have any?
No.
Okay, so you have no other comments or work to come before this board? I am adjourned in this meeting. Thank you so much, and we will see you here tomorrow.